Okay.
Okay, according to my clock up here at six o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call to order regular monthly meeting of Grayson County Board Supervisor. This time I'd ask Mr. Smith, do you mind the lead us an application?
Oh, thank you for the day that's been given in this beautiful county. Thank you for all your blessings on us. Thank you for this board that has continued to serve. The ones, new ones that are starting to serve, we thank you for. Thank you for the good display of citizens out tonight, care about their county. Great to be with us in this meeting for it in your name we pray.
I believe the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation undergone indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone in attendance of the call. This meeting was very consistent with any behavior exercised in any court or legislature. We still have a few minutes before time for, let's see, first off, getting ahead of myself a little bit. All the board members have been apprised beforehand of the agenda, consent agenda, and I entertain a motion to accept that at this time.
Oh, one thing, Mr. Chairman, just from the minutes, I think, based on the discussion we had last month with the public works and that collection site. There was a do out on the options, you know, we reinstated the program, but we needed to come back with my, how we might make it more sustainable and all that. I know it's not on the agenda for tonight, but just wanted to remind the staff of that. So having said that, I just make a question.
For the consent agenda. Have a second, all in favor, signify by sign, same eye. Any opposed? We'd remind, in case there is anyone that's coming to the meeting a little bit late, there is a sign up sheet if you do wish to speak at the public hearing. Concerning Grayson Stone. So. Permit. Sign up sheet in the lobby area. Also, there's, if you do wish to speak during public comment portion of this meeting, you'll need to sign up. This, Jen could go ahead and speak prior to anybody getting a comment. Yes, okay, Mr. Joe Black, Plan Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Board. I've come to you tonight just to bring forth the recommended approval of special use permit two zero two one zero zero nine four.
Recording in progress.
Grayson Stone LLC, I provided to you in your board packets, a narrative, a little bit of background, and I'll take off and read off on that. So the applicant requesting approval for special use permit for the operation of a rock quarry facility in a rural farm zone district. Projects located on Rock Creek Road, approximately quarter mile from Riverside Drive, and that's Route two seventy four, about a mile and a half to be hit. Subject area has no historical impacts, it's not located within the enterprise zone, but is located within the opportunity zone. And I have, Plan Commission both have presented that information to Mr. Jones to take a look at. There could be some potential tax gains and benefits from that. The site's proposed rock quarry approximately thirty three acres. The applicant is proposing a quarry that will operate under the ten acre threshold in accordance with Article four, section four, six point two R of the Grayson County Zone ordinance. Rock quarrying, sand and gravel operations can be requested, disturbing less than acres in size to a special use permit application in the rural farm zone. The remaining property will be used for agricultural activities. Notice will see an app to forward joining landowners. Per the application requirements, there were no comments at the time my staff report was written. But during public hearing, we did have two citizens that did speak, and they spoke in favor of economic impact and employment opportunities. V dot Virginia Department of Health and the Grayson County Boards, excuse me, Grayson County Building Department were also notified. V dot indicated that there would not be a need for approval for the entrance until the Department of Environmental Qualities approved the permit through the state. All other entities, the Department of Health, did not need anything until the point of where there might be bathrooms or those things kind of installed. And Building Department won't need anything permits for permitting until those things are constructed. And Plan Commission did recommend approval of the rock quarry. As a operation in the rural farm zone, and approval was based on findings within the comprehensive plan. The applicant submitted and approved the operation of a survey and special use permit conditions, operations and development plan attached to your board packet. So at this time, staff recommends on behalf of the Grayson County Planning Commission to approve the special use permit contingent upon the county receiving limits of operation survey. Defining the ten acre quarry plus the four acre buffer zone and permitting approved by the Virginia Department of Energy. So I have formulated a motion for the board, and it reads, I make a motion to approve the special use permit application two zero two one zero zero nine four. To permit a ten acre rock quarry operation in a rural farm zone district with attached conditions, operations and development plan. This motion is contingent upon the applicant providing a surveyed site plan defining limits of operation. A limits of operation area and granted permitting approval from the Virginia Energy. You have any questions for staff?
What's the, the conditions, what's the, is there some time lag associated with these conditions that you find necessary to put into motion? This, the.
Normally, if you're special use permit application, if the conditions are part of that application, then they would actually get approved based on what we submitted.
It's a timing question, I guess, so we can move forward, especially, I, I get the motion. I'm just wondering, is there a issue with the survey requirements or any of those other conditions that is requiring us to put it into motion?
Good question. Thank you for asking. The survey is basically to determine exactly where that ten acre, that ten acre tract is.
Okay.
In the event that the ten acre tract goes beyond the outside parcel of which we are submitting this application for. We would then therefore have to backtrack, notify the adjoining landowners by code that we have, are getting ready to issue a special use permit. So that was the reason for the survey, just to determine where those ten acre, that ten acre lies and the buffer zone around it. Because if it exceeds beyond the parcel, then we have to back, back up and pump again.
Right. And I'm, I mean, we can, we'll, you know, the special use will get approved or disapproved, but assuming approval. You know, there's obviously environmental impacts and all that other stuff associated with an operation of this size, although we already have two in the county. Are there, I assume that's still part of, there's probably other approvals that have got to be obtained before we can go operational, is that right?
Absolutely. Virginia mines and minerals now, Virginia Energy are very stringent on those environmentals. And it would be up to Grayson Stone to provide all that documentation to them prior to ever receiving state permits.
Right.
So therefore, we're not really pushing that in overlap because of the stringent regulations.
Right. But our role is just to get the special use permitted.
Yes, sir, so that he can move forward with his permitting process.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Just briefly. Okay, I was, Miss Bill, did I say that?
I would, and I'm just talking about Cardinal Stone, we had a problem back younger with truck traffic. Wouldn't I have made a recommendation that we, maybe had signs put up like you did there that no truck traffic could go up red drive and around? That would be a problem. And what occurs in that road up there and truck traffic wouldn't be good if they use red drives. So with Cardinal Stone, we had signs put up, and I think State V dot would give that. But that would restrict truck, quarry traffic, I guess, quarry traffic, cause also trash trucks, school buses, and they, they would have to go that way, but anyway.
Um. If a free, you know, if that is something that you're making a motion to change or add to those conditions, we can, we can definitely add that. We can formulate it through the highway safety, we can add it as heavy trucks and equipment. Shall use US fifty eight Riverside Drive, Route two seventy four, the Rock Creek Road for ingress and egress for material transport. And all other routes strictly prohibited, which would be red drive and there's a dirt road that also goes out to Coward House. That's entirely, language is entirely up to you.
Yeah, I think at Cardinal, we might be putting down truck traffic, no, no left turns out of the quarry. That would go, take care of it.
That would take any consideration. So do you want me to add that language?
I'm just going it out there for everybody.
I think before we, sorry, I promised Mr. Anderson.
Well, this has kind of opened up another can of worms, but yeah, before we change the language, is that going to delay this process and we're going to have to come back again?
So you're the final, final say. So whatever you implement tonight, either for or against, add, this is, this is it.
My first original question was, so you had mentioned the, the Virginia Energy, so he's kind of, or the Grayson, is, they'll be regulated and monitored by then. That's take, that's not the county's, that's not our role.
No liability to the county whatsoever.
That's all I have.
No, it was just a comment about the motion thing. I think we could probably kick that around after the public hearing and modify the motion as required. But I think it's worthy of discussion. I think it'd be proper to bring the motion anyway to.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Chairman, we advertised, you know, on her agenda that public hearing began six oh five, and we passed that six thirteen, so seeing we have no one that has registered or signed up. Okay. So just point, I would entertain a motion to open for a public hearing. So with. Thanks. Okay, all in favor? Signify by. Any nice? Okay, we're now in public hearing, and there appears to be no registered speakers on this matter. So at that point, would ask to make a motion to go out public hearing.
Show me.
Okay, all in favor by? Okay. This time the chair would entertain motion. I make a motion that we approve as recommended by Mr. Black with the inclusion of the. One which has mentioned was the signage. Okay, so the signage would indicate nobody comes out of the court. Sorry. Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any discussion before the?
I think having the capability, additional capability in the county is really important. I just happen to be located in the center of the county, so I usually get gravel way over there, way over there. And so having a capacity tiny in the center of the county, I think, that's a lot of code, that's not a development, so. Dan, I'm curious, this is the first step, how long will the rest of this permitting take? How painful is that going to be?
I will let Mr. Jones answer that question. He's in up to it.
Yeah, it's pretty painful. Once we submit the application. Was indicated to us it would take thirty to sixty days review before they could approve it, and then they might even kick it back to add more stuff added and changed. I've got halfway filled out.
That's a pretty good process.
Okay, any other questions, ma'am? Okay.
We appreciate the Plan Commission, what they did on this. They, well, times we don't see how much work they put into it. But they've done a lot of work on this, and, and they're very capable of making decisions, and that's something to look forward to, that you can take on our recommendations on for.
Okay. Any other. There's no further discussion, then we have a motion and a second. We'll take a vote this time.
Mr. Anderson? Yes.
Frank?
I.
Strah.
I.
Mr. Bill? I saw I follow. And, and if you hear me calling out the votes, I'm trying to help. Been told, voice that carries through the microphone sometimes, okay. Does that matter? Next on our agenda is reports, presentations and requests versus appreciations of praise and service update of Mr. Jeff Hayden.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you, welcome. Thank you all for having me here. Hope, hope you could pay for somewhere, I was not here in the last meeting, I do not make it so. So I'm going to go over to those things real quick, and I'll make a brief. For y'all know that was a fourteen percent overall average tax of the properties, twelve percent on. Twelve point nine percent on actual non taxable overall, at least the thirty two point nine percent average just on homes alone. Land values basically stay the same, except for some recreational properties and campground sites are on the river. And we only have about a two point six percent average increase on land. We're still at ninety five to the high ninety percentage of market value on homes, so we're still a little under the hundred percent mark on the homes right now. Even with the increase we had. Then I want to touch on what the median house income, and I begin, average price of a house went up by in the last few years. And this is by MLS data, not from the tax records, because I feel like we're still a little under the median house price for what the MLS, MLS says for the realty. As you're saying, real estate agents.
For point clarity, when you, what you, when you say ninety and ninety five percent, you're saying what you all are saying is the assessed value versus what MLS.
When I, we're coming in, what any new market sale was at the end of last year in twenty twenty one.
Coming in under that.
We're coming in about ninety five and the high ninety percent, eleven, one hundred percent.
Yeah.
So we're, we're still a little below the hundred percent mark of homes sales. And of course, what it's going to go with the realty, and we're not formed by that, it's something just to think about, is that in twenty twenty, the median average price of a home in Grayson County was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. In twenty twenty one, it rose to two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, which is a twenty five percent increase in one year on the median, so the home here. Double wise rose by ninety one percent. Their, their value and median value in twenty twenty was two hundred, or a hundred and thirteen thousand, and it went to a hundred and twenty five. So that was, from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty one, it's a ninety one percent increase in median home prices on double wise. And a thirty four percent from two thousand eighteen to sixteen. I really just touched on twenty twenty one more than anything. We were wrapping up the hearings. We've so far seen approximately anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty people. Two hundred and fifty is in person and phone call visits, people seeing us at the Gate Center. The other hundred has been through the emails and written letters, and we are still reviewing and putting replies back to people. We, last day of my deployment is this Friday, or the end. Of course, we will be still in hearings next week. If there is a taxpayer or citizen that files in next Monday, we still, as long as we are here, up there next Friday, we'll see them. Or even take a letter or whatever way they want to do it. And that is pretty much about it right now. I don't perceive, even with, if we had another two or three hundred people come in to appeal, if the overall increase will change much, and what's the assessment? Questions or? Is there any questions or?
You know, I think maybe I was the only one here when we, we went to a six-year term. And some bigger counties will do yearly, correct?
Over four years. Depends on the population, yes.
So we did a six-year sort of spread it out. And it's state mandated that we do that. And it's not this board that says we're going to go up on price. We don't have anything. To do with that. I just.
It's all statistics and we're looking at numbers of what properties and homes are selling forward in this county and looking at the prior assessment. And I'm glad you touched on that because I did kind of skip over that. It's something that I wanted to touch on from. Several years ago was that. Since two thousand ten, go back to what you're saying, once you went back to six-year cycle. Reassessment up through the twenty twenty-one tax year. From that time period on, you'd only seen an increase in home values of like one point four nine percent. And this also included anything from two thousand sixteen on any new construction. Or anything that's been picked up in the commissioner revenue's office that had been added in at one point four nine percent. So. I think even in two thousand sixteen reassessment, there was only a point oh oh five seven increase. It was almost a decrease in values. Of course, we were still coming off that recession back then. So. To see this jump. One year is astounding and it's going on everywhere. It's not just special, great to the county, unfortunately. It's, it's, unfortunately, it's. It's going all over the country. In some places worse than others. I know one job we wrapped up, it had a forty percent increase on homes. That was in Northern Virginia where they do it every four years. So. So it is, and to be honest, I don't know that we're looking at next year or this year. If they're going down like they originally thought from what I'm reading so far in professional real estate stuff is that. And articles that originally they thought the market was going to correct itself, but you're almost saying now it might be another sixteen percent jump on top of that with inflation. On the market, on so.
But so we're clear, that won't affect our taxes.
The next six years is this assessment will be.
Be clear.
Yes. Because you're, you're looking at, you know, with everything going up.
Mr. Anderson, question, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but six years from now. Being that you've never seen something like this go up this fast in one year.
Well.
Is it possible it could reverse itself in six years?
I would love to see inflation stop the way it is, yes. I don't want to see it do like it did in two thousand six and eight, nine. When everything first, you were thought that maybe a lesson had been learned at that point in time. And that wasn't the first time, that ninety-eighties, that was the same with the loans scandal, too then. So. You would hope, I would love to see it correct itself or at least flatten off. I don't know though, that I'd love to see it go backwards. Because then you're setting, seeing people setting their homes, lost equity and mortgage that. Same thing happened. I don't think we ever seen the extent in Southwest Virginia. That's what it did in Florida and places back then in two thousand six, eight, nine. It will have to correct itself. Every real estate person will tell you the same thing. Every banker will probably tell you the same thing. It does have to correct itself at some point, and I thought it was going to in, in twenty twenty-two, but now they're backing up, the experts are. And this is in Fortune magazine. I also read this article in Yahoo, finding it dot com. If y'all want to go back and try to find it yourself about. They're saying now it's Zillow in December predicted that it would still be eleven percent increase. They even backed up and went to sixteen percent of. House prices to one of, it's going to be one of the more competitive markets.
What is, in your assessment, what's, is it simply inflation that's causing?
Partly there's a housing shortage. There's apartment shortage. There's a lot of factors into it right now. Especially kind of in an area like this, a lot of people are selling what they used to rent. Rental market right now is unreal and. They're going to Airbnb. They've found that they can set, you know, rent a house for two weeks out of a month and make as much money as they would as a monthly rental. Or a yearly rental to somebody. A lot of people, I believe, are moving into their, since COVID, there's. Like been seen and realized that, you know, now the broadband and things that you'll be able to work from home more so than they ever used to. And so there's a lot of, a lot of different factors. I believe the low interest rates were fueling a lot of it. And as much as anything, I think there's a big influx of home buyers, first-time home buyers. I've heard many, many realtors tell me that put a house on the market on a Sunday or Monday. And by that Saturday, they've got three people wanting and bidding against each other. And then the price is seeding. More than what they were asking for. I mean, we try to throw that stuff out if we can find it. We're throwing out the house and all the sales and trying to get a better, that's what we're trying to do. So. So that's why I say I feel like we're still under the median house price. I would have had that number for you, but. For what we have on it as far as a taxation purposes, but it's a little harder in this county to terminate because you've got so many. It's a rural area, so many homes that still sitting with good pieces and lots of land with them. And so it's hard to. Sometimes when we're talking about eighteen thousand parcels. Suck around all that information of which ones just actually are home sales. And I can't really just come into the town of Independence and use that either and tell you that's accounting-wise. Median home price without figuring in other parts of the county, you know, then what we'd be looking at then would be homes that sold with. Just an acre or two or half acre, you know, a normal size home site versus fifty acres with it or a hundred acres. Because that does factor in on the price and. As a matter of fact, we even, when we were going through and doing those, the sales say. We kicked those out and didn't apply that to the housing when we got to figure the increase on the housing rates. We didn't even look at anything had over twenty acres that sold with it to figure the housing rates. So.
This is switching gears a little. You might have said this earlier. Have you, have you seen a lot of folks coming in to discuss their assessment?
So far, as we're saying, we've had two hundred and fifty-two that's came in person or that's made an appointment. Now eighty-four of those were only in person. The other hundred and sixty-eight were by phone call. They asked to be called back at home. Either they're homebound or didn't want to come in because of COVID or. Whatever, or out of town. We've had eighty email responses that we're still working through. And some of those folks are wanting property cards sent back and information that we're responding back to and giving them everything they need or want back. And some of those are even to make the in-person appeal. There's about fifteen written letters so far. So we're looking at around three hundred and fifty appeals total with all the processes that we provided. Emails, in-person, phone calls, written letters. So. I looked at the schedules for still a while ago for next week. They're not full. By no means. We still have appointments of people that come in. And like I said, even if it comes Monday, if somebody still wants to appeal and miss the deadline, we will make a spot for them if we're bringing in additional assessors.
I would like to say too, I assisted some, some of our citizens to, to the process more so for I could learn myself what you guys do. But some of the older ones were a little apprehensive and, and it asks just for more support that I go with them, which is fine. And your guy down there, Chad, is, he was excellent with those folks and, and they were all impressed, all the ones that I went with. With how he explained things and handled it. So I give him a plug.
Well, thank you. And that's something that we're going to be with, even if, even if the person is just upset beyond reason. Doesn't have anything good to say about us at all. We're not going to treat you back that same way. We're going, for one thing, it never ever ends well. When I come back at you, I come back to you the same way if you was upset that with me. Just it never goes far. And then on top of that, there's no way I can thank and reason if I have to let myself get that upset either of Chad to the point of where. I, I might miss something that you told me, even if you're yelling, need to talk your lungs out. I've always said, listen to what you've got to say and listen to. Maybe whatever part that I can deduct out of that, even if it is sometimes just pure juvish.
Well, I ain't got any negative feedback, so at least in the small circle around.
And if you're, if you're doing that, you know, something that really helps us is especially in some of these homes, like I'm sure what you're talking about, the area. Unable to main thing or homes anymore. It's okay. Please let us know, you know, that it's not been updated, even if, even if they can take a picture or something. Or if you have a daughter, you can take it with, at this day and time, cell phone. A lot of times we just, you know, like you said, where people's not ever. They don't have to face it every six years. They don't understand the process. Anything you can ever bring in like that, that, you know. That will lead us something to where we can say, well, this probably is not up to market par and we need to back off some or whatever. Bring anything, I'm going to see somebody come in with the whole file cabinet full of information than to just sit and say what's not working. You know, it, it helps us out mutually.
He, he told me that on the first day, so folks were able to give him some, some good basis for why they felt like it.
Of course, I go see any job with any constituents or whoever, you know, will know that anything they can do with this process to make the appeal process easier for everybody. It's just tremendous help.
Well, it's, it's a very intimidating process.
Yes, absolutely.
And, and I went myself for my mother originally, and I thought it was going to be a room full of people and I was, you know, I would get pounded. And we just sit down at the table and look at the computer and the numbers and.
Well, the next step of appeals, there will be, you know, there will be more and more person. And but still, I don't believe that Larry or the judge here will select somebody that's going to be intimidating or just overall bully or some sort. We, we have no intentions. I mean, it's just like the board member over there, just need to go spoke. This is something that's state regulated. Every six years, the board has no control over even, even what the Department of Taxation passes down to us. And how we go through the criteria that we've got to do to get to the end product is all pretty much governed by them. There's some things I'd love to see changed in that, but the only way that ever gets changed is to go to Richmond to. To send it in to the House of Deputies and change the tax code. It cannot be done here, cannot be done anywhere in the state other than Lincoln. So. So it is, it is what it is. And it's, it's in the interest of being fair and consistent is how it's handed down to us that we're not. Showing partiality to somebody else or, or somehow now we do make mistakes. You know, I wish I could tell you we, if not probably, and that there's still probably somewhere in there, and if eighteen plus thousand parcels were reviewed. There might be a mistake. And of course, Larry, you know, if that's brought forth even to the commissioner in the next six years, that can still be adjusted. You know, if it's a factuary or something like that, if you reach turn.
Well, I appreciate what you do and the courtesy you guys have. I don't necessarily like the end result of what you do when it comes to taxes, but that's, you know, it is what it is.
Well, we don't like it either when it's in this type of environment. This is not something that we enjoy either. It makes it very hard to regret. Even as it is, sometimes even an average rate of increase, as I was talking college economics was quite then three, four percent a year. Then you're looking at over a six-year period time, possibly ten, fifteen percent increase. That's hard enough. But once you go into the type of environment we are right now with the housing market, it's not been easy anywhere that we've had to do this process. So.
Well, I appreciate that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for opportunity to work here. I love this county. It's one of the most beautiful counties we've ever worked in.
What kind of crowd I'm in. That explains the tax.
I don't know. It's not my job. So I'm sure that that's true. So thank y'all.
Next on the agenda with Baywood Tech, face one, Mr. Google Sturgis. Good afternoon, and I was one of the ones that called in for the assessment and the process for break. Has a little river, place in the river, and they showed a picnic area that was not on my property. So it was great. The system was good. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start and try to put about a four-year history of the Baywood conversation that I was a part of. And then I'll turn it over to Yancy and Jim Worth this year with Tri-Area Health, and they maybe can answer questions on their front. Most certainly complaints and architectural drawings and that kind of stuff. So. So just, you know, a little quick base backdrop. So when, when you guys or the school system. Closed Baywood and no longer use Baywood. You know, for an elementary school. So it was a conversation started with, at that time, superintendent Grayson County, Carol County, myself. As at that time, the superintendent Gaylax. Over the course of four years, that conversation included, you know, representative from representative, representation from your board. Brandon was on that some, I think, that came within that some that were, we had professors and represent, representatives from. West Hill Community College from Rafford, from Virginia Tech. And over those four years, so as I've talked to a lot of people in the county, I would hear, well, I've heard. This is coming into Baywood, this is coming into Baywood, and everything you heard was probably asking, because over four years, there were a lot of conversations of many different. You know, different concepts that you could bring into Baywood. A lot of those concepts revolved around K-12 education. A lot of those revolved around adult education. With K-12, it was more directed towards STEM concepts for robotics and engineering, drones. With adult education, it was conversations that would match up with what was believed to be needed to serve the citizens of Grayson County. And that changed, that this conversation changed based on the superintendents that might be in the room and what they felt was needed. You know, and what this Grayson County schools need, what this Gaylax need, what would bring Carol to us or with to us. So those conversations changed, evolved a lot of good ideas over the course of those four or five years. But at the back of that conversation was the kind of the, the understanding that to move forward, you have a fabulous grant writer. Lot of good concepts, a lot of good things that can happen, but the grant process doesn't fix that building and upgrade building. So all along in my involvement, I believe that. That maybe this conversation was what was needed four years ago, where you guys have to decide. Are we going to put funds in renovating the Baywood building to serve the community and the county of Grayson? And I don't tend to know the answer to that. You know, I serve on the school board in Carroll and I understand making those decisions and you guys were there to make that decision. So as we, we moved that conversation forward, there were beliefs that there were needs of daycare in Grayson County, medical facilities. I think that's what brought Jim Worth into the equation, his conversation of offering some of those medical services to the citizens. The need of daycare, that was always continued to be bounced around, that we would have a daycare center in there. You have a functioning gym, which is in pretty good shape right now. You have the ability to have a commercial-grade cafeteria. Kitchen area, it could be used for whether it's Rotary or churches, you could pursue having a career or someone in there that had a catering business. So those conversations were, were just behind the scenes for four years, a lot of good ideas. The top floor with. You know, adult education, K-12, advanced education, again, whether it's autonomous stuff, robotics engineering, whether it's welding. All those programs were just. whether it's welding, all those programs were discussed over four years. But but at the end of the day, you guys have a building, and if you decide to renovate that building and move forward, I do feel that there's been a lot of really good ideas of of concepts, programs that would serve the citizens of Grayson County. Okay, so where we ended up, we we went forward and moved out for a bid for a part of that lower floor. Okay, so, you know, initially, conversations were, you do it all and then break it into phases. And so most certainly, Yancy can talk about the plans that went out to bid, we received four bids back for those, that can be discussed. And then I think it was conversation about breaking that first proposal or that 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 first project into smaller projects. And again, Yancy is the expert there, and I think can field and and answer all the questions that you guys might have.
No pressure. Could you, there's something, you you said the phases, can you explain to me what you're referring to when you say the phases?
Yeah, and and again, I I have to qualify all those things because they just changed quite frequently over time. You know, because, you know, I would have been advocates most certainly four years ago just to come here and, you know, propose a renovation of the whole building. So, yeah, I think we ultimately fell to like three phases, is that is that represent phase one?
So when we started in two thousand January, I think, when we started this conversation last year, and at that point in time, the thought was, let's just do it all and get it all done. And we we kind of said, if we do this, it's gonna be blank. But the problem was, at that point in time, we weren't really for sure what was going in the space. Are we gonna use the top for education, are we gonna use this for community service, are we? And so there was a bunch of things, daycare was floated out, well, let's put daycare on the first floor, and let's put the health department. And so we had all these different ideas, and when we took a look at it, we realized that we were spending quite a bit of money to do the upper floor, we didn't have anything lined up for the upper floor. So we started to pare it back and go, okay, we know we've got this client that wants to move in, and we got the possibility for a grant for this, and we got the possibility for a grant for this, and those only X number of square feet, so let's pare it back. Let's do some things that we have to to get those in there. So originally, it was gonna be, the phase one was gonna be just the, before Tri-Area got involved, it was gonna be just get the restrooms, get the building up so that you could have somebody move in, and it could be used to education. And then Tri-Area came in and said, okay, let's do Tri-Area, and let's do the common bathrooms, and that gives you the ability to use it for a community center. And that's where it stopped. And then, as we went on of the process, we said, well, we can get a grant for this, and we can get a possibility of daycare, so let's do that. And so what ended up happening was it ended up being two phases on the first floor. So this would be phase one, everything in this side over here, which would give you the opportunity for the Tri-Area, it would also give you the opportunity for community education or daycare downstairs, you're set, ready to go. That would also change up all the restrooms so that if you had a community event going in the gym, they actually had an accessible restroom and an accessible place to use, because right now, that's not really anything that's in the building. So by doing this over here, you at least allow the building to be used for other events and other things. So one, two was the community center and the kitchen, and then three was upstairs.
So your third phase is upstairs.
Third phase is upstairs, yes.
But the third phase in the language that we have here is in, that's changing.
Yeah, I think you guys maybe talked about that last, so I think how how were, I think you broke what we were calling phase one.
You broke this into one, yeah, like part one.
Into two, and then three, and then beyond, the four, whatever we need to do in the next step. But y'all, the way I understood it, what I was tasked with was find out what it would take to this to do the Tri-Area and need the rest of this space.
And that was for the last meeting.
Yes, sir, right. You know, one thing that I would just kind of throw out, like fitting in the bathrooms, like right now, you have a scout troop. With no running water, no bathroom, so you know, you're really, if you're gonna bring the building up to par, I would keep that.
So so there's people utilizing the facility.
I mean, I don't wanna speak out of term, but I'm pretty certain there's a scout troop that had been utilizing or still utilizing that space throughout the time I've been in on that building. And so, you know, I think anything that, if you're gonna break Tri-Area Health in phase one, getting this back bank of bathrooms completed, if you're gonna move forward, I think that's pretty important.
Right, because that's the public space that you will use in.
By upgrading that, again, that gives you the opportunity to do something with the gym. It gives the building an opportunity to be used. If you don't do that, technically, you know, the only public, the only eighty-eight accessible bathroom would be inside of the medical. There would be no place, no, you know, we gotta change the well out, we gotta change it. So there's, there's this long list of things that we have to do to get the building ready, but at the same time, I think there's some advantages of doing those things, because right now, and and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn or anything like that, but let's say that we have an opportunity, we got great opportunity for a grant, we could do it, we just have someplace to put them. If we don't do these things to the building, if we don't upgrade the power, if we don't upgrade the restrooms, if we don't make it any successful, if we don't provide parking for it, we got a great idea, we got a great space, it's gonna take us a year to get the building ready, and we might miss that opportunity, you know.
So can you tell me about the gym, what's the status of the gym?
The gym is fully functional, it's got heat, it's got good light, it's a good space, the floor is good. I mean, it could be used as a community meeting space, the kitchen in the back is, the kitchen equipment's been removed, but it can still be used as a almost fellowship hall type space, you know, bring something in, set up trays, serve it, you know, it's a, the serving lanes are there. So I think the gym side of it is a usable space.
It's usable now, so we have the scouts possibly use it.
Yeah, they they do use the gym, so there was an old, I guess, a tile floor at one time, it was only that gym, many small schools, it was a cafeteria also. And underneath that tile floor is really beautiful hardwood floor, so that tile floor's been removed, I think folks here have done that, and it's a a beautiful hardwood floor, but now, now the kitchen, it's it's, yeah, it's it's, you know, obviously, to utilize the kitchen, it has to, it has to have, to be refurbished in some way, I mean, you don't have to put, you know, top-tier or commercial-grade equipment, you could do warming.
And we talked about that, that was, you know, we talked about full-service kitchen, and then we also talked about warming kitchen, and what do we wanna do, and how much equipment do we wanna put in there, could it be used in this capacity? I mean, basic capacity.
That's not in your face, though.
No, it's not in this one.
This is, yeah.
So let's back up just a little bit. So you you said there's a scout troop possibly using the facility, we don't have, we don't have usable water in this, and and the water is, is it contaminated?
It's, there's a filtration system.
Tell us about the water system.
So there's a filtration system on the water, the water is not drinkable right now. When the school was in, they had a filtration system that they had to maintain, and the school let the filtration system just pull out. I've talked to the plumbing engineers and other people in the county, and their recommendation is that there's the well that needs to have a new well drilled to put in. So no matter what we do, we're gonna have to put a new well in at that point in time.
So is that water, I mean, is it still come on in the in the? So one of those.
It does, it does, but it's brown.
So, okay, so if those kids got in that water, that could be a liability issue.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I I'm certainly have a little concern with the building being used right now, yeah.
I'm just trying to get clear on on the water and the different phases.
But the building's really not usable right now, I mean, I'm saying that.
That's that's fair.
You don't have bathrooms, you don't have accessibility, you don't have water, so it's really not usable. And and to my, and the only thing I have noticed, again, in my time being now, is just that one word that has been set up as a scale.
Right, so part of your, part of your phase one that is we're talking about tonight, I guess, are you you gonna talk to the contractor about breaking it up into phases?
Sure.
Would include the well.
Then it includes the well.
Includes the well and part of the first floor.
And so what I've asked them to do is I've asked them to break in, break out, you know, we're not doing this community education space, we're not doing these meeting spaces, so 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 pull the HVAC, globalize, pull the finishes out of those. Also, take the finishes back to this point right here, because of, you know, people coming for Tri-Area are gonna come in this front door, we need to dress up that hallway, because they'll be walking down here, so we want it to be cleaned and well-lit. So basically, from this hallway up, we've talked about doing, but in addition to that, there are certain things that you as a landlord would have to do in order to get to the building effect. There's not enough power in the building right now to supply what they need or anybody else we need, so we gotta get new services, we gotta get a new well. We'd have to reroute the existing sewer out and in the front into the subject tank. We would have to provide the mechanical systems to control that and then bring it to their space, and then they pick it up from there. So there's a bunch of work that has to be done just to get building usable outside. So in the original quotes that you got, the forequotes that you got for the bids, that was for the interior work, those did not include the outside several work.
So everything you just told us about getting those ready with the mechanical stuff wasn't in that original?
No, it was, I'm sorry, no, that was all in the original numbers, just the outside, the site work, the dirt work.
Mr. Ivey has a question.
Yeah, Trey Yancy, I've worked with Yancy for several years, and I can tell you, he'll always say something you don't like, but it'll be opportunity.
Well, it's better to do that now than later y'all can bang, go, wait, we didn't know that.
Of the four original bids and one point four, I believe, was the.
One point plus.
Can you, before we broke it into phases, was that one point four for all three phases? Or was it initially for the medical?
That one point four was for everything from this line all the way over. That would be new lights, new finishes, new HVAC, new plumbing, new power, new fire alarm.
Structural sounds.
Yes, all the way from this line over.
So you just, you you would have, so again, a functioning classroom here, this would have that potential of daycare or classroom,
but it does not include the parking lot?
It doesn't, and the reason we couldn't include that in the number is because we're taking bids for site work in November, and there's no way that they could have broke around, they couldn't have paid, they couldn't move the dirt, they couldn't have done that in December. And it's not fair to ask them, y'all would have paid a premium for us to go, how much are y'all gonna charge us to asphalt this in April?
So I guess, one more question. If 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 we break it up in phases like we've done, and that site work requires two, two different areas of movement dirt, hauling dirt in, and I had a conversation about that for details and impacts.
Okay, so we really have, the site is really based on, I think, and it goes back to three phases. It's like the rest of the building, everything, it kind of worked in groups of three. You can see the existing building sitting right here, this is the drop-off in the amount of working that is required for the the health department, the Tri-Area. They need a pharmacy drop-off, they need to have cars, they need to be able to get people in and out of this space. So we have to do this chunk of space of site work, that's the bare minimum. Now, in the back, we had another piece back here, this would be the parking that's required if we did the free education or the daycare classrooms on the rest of phase one, the original phase one, those three classrooms, that is the parking and the apartments that's required for those. And then the third piece down here is if we were to do parking for education upstairs or community event in the gym. Now, one of the problems is, we would recommend going ahead and pulling the trigger and doing all three pieces of site work at once. And the reason for that is, is if you look here and you can see the dirt lines, we're having to bring in a lot of dirt in order to make the drive-through and the parking lot work. Over here on phase three, we have to get rid of a lot of dirt. And so if we were to do this piece here, we would have to be bringing dirt in the side. If we only did that piece, it's gonna be more expensive per square foot, you know, it would be just to go ahead and take the little press off here and just fold it over to the side. So we may look at it, and y'all may say, we don't really wanna do all that, let's just take the dirt from here and put it over there. We could possibly just do phase one and three and and not do two. But if y'all wanna use it as a daycare, we really need to get that drop-off for the daycare to get it close, because we don't want kids dropping up, the kids over here and walking all the way back around up here to the daycare. So it's just, all the pieces kind of fall together, it makes the most sense to do all the site work at once. But again, do you wanna do all of this site work if the only people you're gonna put in the building is Tri-Area?
Right.
So it's it's almost long-term, your long-term plan at this point.
Well, I'm I'm yielding back.
Okay, thanks. Did, as far as the water, did you guys, have you done like a study to see if if you dig a new well, is it gonna be the same problem as the old well or?
As a bid situation, you know, we couldn't dictate, and I couldn't spend y'all's money to go out and do an exploration, say, we're gonna put wells here, here, here. I couldn't do that. The only thing that I was able to do is reach out to the company that actually drilled the well last time, and they had a good concept of how the well went, and they were able to tell us, okay, we have these issues. We think you can get clean water, because other people have had no problems getting clean water out there, it's most likely the casing has dissolved or rotted out, we need a new well and a new casing. And they came back and they said, if we were to do that well that we did last time, we would charge twenty-five thousand dollars to do the well, carrying allowance of that. And so we instructed in the bid documents, all the bidders to carry the exact same amount. So it wasn't somebody coming in and having a well company that we had never heard of, thinking that they're only gonna put a hundred-foot well out here, and somebody else coming in to put a four-hundred-foot well, we asked them all to carry the same twenty-five thousand dollar amount of the well. So as an allowance, if y'all came in and we put the well in and we hit the well, the water really good the first go-around, and we used half that money, that allowance would go back to the project.
So I know this is really far-reaching, but so we're 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 looking right now, one point four million to do part of the first floor.
Sure.
If we renovated the entire building, which would require an elevator, and I didn't see that.
It's not, because because there's no reason to put that in right now, if we're not doing anything upstairs.
My question is, if, so we're one point four million to do part of first floor, would it be safe, say, we're looking at four or five million if we did the entire building, or or if you guys looked at anything that would give us a?
That's a guesstimate, that's a really good question, but you know, the way they were talking about prices and everything changing. In January of twenty twenty-one, we took some square footage and some historical numbers, and that's where we came up with the original three million that we had talked about. Now, over that past year, prices have gone up twenty percent on some projects. So if it was three million back then, or we're looking at four, four and a half, that that might be a fair price. Upstairs, though, the most expensive thing about going upstairs, so we're laying the groundwork for downstairs and upstairs. The power and the water are being brought in. Original bid price that we got had the restrooms downstairs bringing work, and everything stubbed up upstairs so that when time came, alls you have to do is put fixtures in, so you're not saw-cutting floors, you're not doing any of those things. Also, you're not having to bring in the new heavy power, you don't have to bring in the well. So upstairs, you're talking about fit and finish and the elevator, so the upstairs cost is gonna be a lower cost per square foot than what you're dealing with downstairs.
That's what you're in the goal for, I mean, I would think that's very reasonable based on the numbers we got that to do the whole thing, I think, you know, you're going to have to six billion, I think that's a very reasonable.
Yeah, because you you had to talk with construction phases, and I think we were talking with planning phases, which are two different things, because I I was thinking, okay, three phases, fixes the building, what we would discuss in this, this planning. So that, thanks for the clarification, and thanks for your time.
But right now, your recommendation is that phase one is really phase one plus, it's the medical place plus the rest.
Well, that, I mean, that's that's how we put it out to be, just based on the direction of the committee, as we met and put it out to be it for. We scaled back the cafeteria, the gym, even though the gym's usable, you know, we we had a vision of the gym being refurbished and painted, and things removed, the old baskets, things like that, so.
So right now, if you go back to that other slide. Right, right now, I think what you're recommending, right now, you're saying that whatever, right now, the proposal is that we do everything north of that purple line, north of the hallway, the east-west hallway.
That's what y'all had asked us to look at.
But in reality.
Well, we had originally looked at, you're correct, it's it's from from this line.
What makes the most sense for the current is to do that for the health piece, because they're gonna be a revenue generator for the county. But the restrooms give us the ability to make the other parts of the building functional, even though they're not renovated.
So if you did, if you did A, one, I guess, and this piece right here, we could take out this community classroom, the fit and finish, the ceilings, the mechanical stuff on those, we could take that out and just leave those. Those classrooms have heat and they have light. But that, if you have the restrooms intact right there, then you would be able to act quickly to something else that can move into these spaces, because they're occupied spaces right at one time.
So the one point four was to do everything minus the gym?
That direction, and the and the kitchen, kitchen area, so you call it cafeteria. Everything, everything in the diagonal was was excluded at this point.
Right, so then if you do the the one plus, phase one, alpha, what what's that dollar looking like?
Okay, so I, I asked Cor, we talked to the low bidder, because, you know, I was thinking, if we, we got a couple ways to move ahead, we can talk about that here in a second. But I was thinking that they were the low bidder, and we have the rights, and. But I was thinking that they were the low bidder and we have the rights and to enter negotiations with them and ask them for some possible BP. And so I asked them to take everything from that line forward and give us a price for it. They gave us a ballpark of rather than a million dollars to do that work. I think that might be a little bit high, but I think that's because they're going off of conversations that they had with MEP guy, with their, their trade. Saying, what would you do if we just drew a line right here? But that still includes upgrading the well, upgrading the sewer, upgrading the power and all the mechanical that we would need in the future benefit. So there's a lot of things that are in that number that y'all aren't going to see the benefit from until these other pieces.
Right. Okay. So I got, I got that piece. Now, back to the other slide. This may be more. Yes, A. But we're not that far from the city of Galax line, right? And we're talking about having a well that may be suspect is, you know, we always have issues with water.
So the well driller did say they had a hard time getting water on this site and that was.
Correct. Because across the road from there is Nupps Curve area and you know, we had all the problems with water quality over there. So is it possible as part of this that we look at some sort of a water extension like we did at Nupps Curve to bring pressurized water and bring, you know, I'll use the word public water, but like we've done at Edwards Road and Nupps Curve and that sort of thing. Is that possible? To avoid the long-term challenges with keeping well well? Cause that, I know that's not part of your all's this bid, but it's, it may be an alternative to the costs associated. If we're going to spend a bunch of money drilling probably a five or a foot well.
Hmm.
Would that money, money be better spent putting in a water line?
And at that time, when Nupps Curve was, uh, there was some discussion about coming across fifty eight there for your building. And, uh, and going across it.
I mean, it's still pretty good, it's still pretty good distance.
The biggest concern I remember, uh, supervisor plant was coming under fifty eight was going to be quite a task, but that, but that it never developed into anything other than a concern and. And you know, but it's, it's, it's possible, it's possible. Nobody said this is not possible.
And, and we, when I did talk to the, you were talking about a deep well, just like you just mentioned.
Correct.
But there is the chance that we'll get it right on the first time and there's a chance that we might do it three times.
Right. I understand. Yes.
Okay.
And, and I'll just throw in as, as a whole, maybe to, to wrap up what I would share. You know, if you wave a wand and the building was completely revving, we could feel that building. And I have, I have complete confidence that we could feel that. I mean, you've got, you've got Virginia Tech just eager to be a part. To be a part of autonomous programs that, that they can bring in. The school systems have good ideas. So the space I feel, I believe would fill up. And that's just my opinion. And I do believe that it would, that it would fill up.
And, and I think the other part of it too is, then we can let Jim speak to this, but you've got somebody that's ready and willing to go in that space. Right now. I mean, if you don't make these changes, the building will sit there until something else. And what, you'll be, you'll be a year out again before you can have somebody move in. So.
Yeah, you guys may have questions.
Well, you said Virginia Tech was interested, you know, that's interesting.
Yeah, actually professor from tech came up and visited site and spent some time with us and you're very, very excited and eager.
Would, would he still not be interested if we did that at a different location like?
Oh yeah. I mean, I don't think that he would.
It was specific to where you would, we could. No, no, he, he just, uh, I think he was very excited that the conversation
uh, around autonomous type programs was happening in Grayson County. He was very excited about that. So, uh, you know, I mean, we really believe that we, we had Bradford City Schools, Whiffle, uh, Carroll, Galax and Grayson all, uh, excited about potential programs here. And again, that's not talking about the adult piece. There's that adult piece also and a lot of good grant concepts. Probably more good grant concepts for the adult piece, continuing education type programs for adults.
And the pricing, the one point four pricing that we received actually had one of the, one of the grants that we were pursuing had some pretty specific requirements for education, classroom for power data, things along those lines that could be used for high tech classrooms. And that was all embedded into the original one, original pricing was, was fitting out those classrooms into a high tech educational classroom. So.
Bill, was there, I'm sorry. Was there any discussion? I mean, you know, when you were in superintendent, Galax, y'all sent a bunch of kids to the Gov School down in Dublin. Grayson, I don't think participates for a variety of reasons. Logistically, I think is probably the biggest one. Um. Any discussion on, you know, a Gov School for Ag or something like that?
Well, that was one of the first things, the first thing to talk about.
Well, many versions of, of governor type schools, not only along with Ag, and Kelly was a real, you know, real believer in that. Uh, but also the governor of school concept in the STEM class and the robotics and the engineering, the cybersecurity. So yes, it was a belief on the, on, on the high school end of the education piece that we could create classes that standalone none of us could do. You know, we couldn't create class in Grayson or Galax if we didn't have our kids. So we needed to capture those two or three, four kids from Whiffle, Carroll. Yeah. So we, we had lots of ideas about STEM programs, uh, around not only agriculture, but all the technology.
And that was one of the first things we talked, we talked about putting the elevator in the third floor. And the first thing that we were tasked out with, with doing the third floor on the original sketch, uh, or second floor on the face three, second floor. Okay. Uh, on the sketch was can we put an admin space up there and would the classrooms meet the requirements? And so we went back and looked and those classrooms, because they're originally designed for elementary school kids, they're hard to be a little bit larger. Um, were big enough to handle a modern high school classroom in there. So that was the first box that we checked off. Yep, it works just fine. And where the elevator would go up, we'd be able to put an admin suite, a small admin suite and a man trap so that somebody, we could have controlled access. And we said, works upgrade. There's not a lot going on the third floor or second floor, other than the restrooms that we have to upgrade. And so that's when we went back down to the, the lower level.
Yeah, just, it just, sorry, last, it just seems like the, the leveraging of the Carroll, Grayson, City of Galax from the Gov School side would be pretty unique for this area. We don't, we don't really benefit from that, uh, opportunity that other kids in other places are benefiting from. So.
Absolutely. And it's a chore to get kids to the governor's school for, for the divisions.
Right.
Our region. Um, yeah, absolutely. And really that's kind of where the vision probably kind of started and grew from. Uh, and I think the superintendent's kind of routinely said, uh, if you build it, we'll come up. I mean, that was the belief, if, if it were ready and operational, we could, we could give programs.
Were those, were those, did those discussions involve the other counties chipping in on?
No, the conversation there would be, the structure of that would be similar to, um, any governor's school. So like if you, like if Galax sent kids here, there would be a cost sharing. Uh, and it's just calculated. We, we share a lot of programs regionally, like right now, we share special education programs regionally. There are housing Galax that Grayson, Carroll and Galax all utilize. And the cost of that is that we've broken up the total cost of the program. And then if you put a kid, you know, it's just, it's just a mathematical formula. So it would be a cost sharing, uh, to bring kids here. Uh, for instance, if you elevated to the part where you have seven classrooms going, you would need an administrator. And then the divisions would have to share the cost of things like that also. So it would be shared.
Okay, right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, you guys. Yeah, you guys, I don't know if you're having questions for, for Jim.
Oh, yes.
Good day to you. Thank you very much. I don't have anything prepared to say, so I'm, I'm ready to take my questions. Yeah, I could say some things, but.
Yeah, if you, if you. I don't know if I want to ask questions.
If, if you want my some open comments at five and then with the different vendors building the question, send my hand forward.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak last time and that's, I'm just trying to talk about the tri area. And I appreciate, I, I hope that y'all saw the memo that I sent, um, following up on the special last time about the free clinic. Uh, I went over as talking to the medical director of the free clinic and went over and met with their executive director. Um, oh, there it is. Uh, about whether there are any concerns, um, of our coming in. And so I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to them about that. Um, because it turns out that will probably be collaborating on some things at this point. Um, and so both the exec, both the executive director and the medical director said that they didn't see us as a, a concern or a threat to them. And that we actually would, because they don't serve very many Grayson County folks over there. Um, you'll see on the back of that about twenty appointments a month, um, that we would actually feel a need, uh, in their opinion. Um, and that we would be bringing in a number of different things to the area that they don't provide, such as behavioral health, case management, um, nutrition, some of those kinds of things. So, um, I feel like the conversation that we had last time allowed us to do some collaboration with them and probably help them with behavioral health services. As well as, um, allowed us to say, allowed them to say that, that they feel like we would, we would complement that they do. So that's part one. Um, the second thing is that, um, I had a conversation with Yancy, um, about the cost um, that he was projecting and ran some numbers with my CFO, talked with Rich a little bit. And we believe that we could probably pay on whether the estimates are accurate in terms of the, the cost of our part of it. That we could pay off our part in, in six years. And so, um, we would set up a lease, um, uh, with the county, um, and assuming that all the, the cost estimates are, are roughly accurate. Um, that we would, the county would get their money back on our part in six years.
Can you tell me what your part, what you're referring to that you were.
The, um.
Sure. I understand the part of the bill.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the part of the fund.
Oh, oh, the estimate was a hundred and seventy to a hundred and seventy-five dollars per square foot, which we put it right around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our part of it. Um, uh, and that twenty six hundred and sixty-one square feet, figuring out, um, the cost of that, if we, if we broke up four hundred and fifty thousand, um, over seven years, that's about, so about sixty four thousand dollars a year that we, um, cover.
So it's. So as far as the services that got your hands up here, I don't see on your, the opioid treatment that, that we discussed in the last one you mentioned. You guys have to be able to treat opiate addicted folks. Is that, is that pulled out or where, where, where is that?
I don't remember. Uh, maybe I misremember. I don't remember focusing on that last.
Is that something that you offer? You don't offer treatment for?
Okay.
So then maybe you lost any of it. I was almost sure you said, or the behavioral thing you, you'd mentioned, you'd be able to treat folks for opiates.
Oh, well, we, we treat substance use, substance misuse. Um, and so we do have counselors who provide, uh, treatment for that. And we have, um, a psychiatric mental nurse, mental health nurse practitioner and a psychiatrist who could prescribe medications if people needed some. But we, we don't do medication assisted treatment at this point. We don't do, um, methadone. We don't offer any of those.
Suboxone?
Not at this point.
Okay. Any of your locations?
Not at this point.
But is that something that they could potentially?
It could, it could be depending on the medical provider. They have to have a waiver. Um, they have to have, um, support to be able to do that. But if, if there was a need, then that's something that, that could be offered, but at this point it's not an expectation that, that the provider would be doing that. But, but it could be a service, just like, um, any number of different, um, things could become vision, could be a service down the road, but we don't operate now. But if that was something that we saw the need that was there, not, not methadone, we're not going into methadone. Um, but, but medication assisted treatment where there's suboxone plus behavioral health counseling. There's the potential for that, but that's not, it's not anything that we've, we've put on paper as an expectation at this point.
Right. But it is a potential. And if you, you guys leased the property, you're just, your lease says, we don't, we don't, we, we as a county can't dictate whether you have a suboxone clinic or, or not.
Correct. Just like you wouldn't.
Right.
Whether we have vision or not, potential.
So we, there's no way we can include that in the, in the language of the lease, I guess, because that's my, one of my big concerns. Is that if, if you guys do decide to do suboxone, that, that's going to really be detrimental to that community to, to bring that kind of treatment into that area.
Having worked in, uh, sites that do medication assisted treatment, I would disagree. I mean, that's a philosophical difference on, on that perhaps. But I can say that, that we don't have the space to do a medication assisted treatment program there. So any sort of treatment would be a, a one-on-one where the medical provider, like any other treatment. So you have diabetes and she makes a decision, this is the treatment for you for diabetes. If he, if, if, if there's a concern about a need for a, a suboxone, that would be a one-on-one individual medical decision that would be made with that between that medical provider and that patient and with the support that the behavioral health support rounded. So it would not be a, a program in and of itself, but would be a service, a medical service that would be offered between that, that provider and that patient as opposed to being advertised, we have a suboxone program here. It would be, it would be that individual medical decision, assuming that that provider had the training and to be able to provide that, uh, prescription.
I appreciate that explanation. Sure. That was, that was a big concern.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're not, we're not looking at a, at, at a program. We're looking at a, an individual medical decision.
Just one, from a timing standpoint, once they're done with construction and they say, okay, you're ready to move in, what's your role? What's your?
Uh, we are interviewing now. I, I can make job offers tomorrow. Um, we'll, we will move in as soon, but once they say it's ready, once the contractor says it's released, we'll, we'll start moving in. I, I, I would like to start, I would like to open up next month. Um, but if they say June, I will hire people with the expectation that they'll sign just.
Another question, if, so if for whatever reason we're running some big issue with this, the school itself. Is there any other locations in Maywood you might look at or be, uh, open to, uh, putting a clinic?
We, um, we haven't looked for any other location, um, in, in Maywood because this, we, we actually, this, we were invited to come in for this space. So we hadn't been looking in that area. The only other places we looked for space, um, were Freeze. And there's already a medical provider up there, so we don't need to move into Freeze. And we had looked in up Creek, but there's no building there. Um, and we had looked in here in Independence, but there's no, there's already competition here. So, um, if, if we hadn't been invited to look at Maywood, we wouldn't have been looking there because we hadn't, we hadn't projected that as a, as a space for us. So we had to move it up. Thank you. So we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Next item on the agenda is the introduction of Grayson County Parks and Recreation Director, Joshua Sharks. Uh, I know I probably butchered that last night. I apologize. Yes, I'm, I'm really pleased to introduce the, the board in the county to Joshua Sherretts. Uh, he, uh, is coming to us from, uh, the city of Blacksburg. He's the second in charge of the parks and recreation, uh, programs there. He has been us to fireball already of, of ideas and energy. What we're, what we are doing is we are, we want to transform our parks and recreation program from one that is centered primarily on independence in the center of the county to being something that not only serves independence in the center of the county, but the entire county. We want to have those programs be interconnected and we want to expand the, the array of programs we have. That's what, that's what excited, I think, excited Joshua about him coming here and that is, uh, why we're so pleased that he's on board. I just wanted to say a couple of words to go introduce.
Do you need some products? Uh, thank you for having me. Um, and thank you all for welcoming me into Grayson County. It's, it's been quite an experience and uh, quite, quite a huge amount of information thrown at me in the last, last month or so. Uh, but it's been very exciting. So, um, as the, the show that we were at said, uh, it's kind of like, this is park director here. I've got about fourteen years experience in parks and recreation. Um, starting in Towne Woodville and then primarily in the county of Blacksburg area. Um, what I, just to give you a heads up on what I've been, I've been up to last month is I've been trying to do an initial assessment of the parks, uh, program and statements just to the Grayson County park to Grayson County parks and recreation. Um, I think that's important to the fact that, that is stating the difference there. Um, that includes the community Freeze, that includes the communities over in Westman and County as well as continuing to improve on the programs here in Independence. Um, my goals. My goals with this are phased, you know, we've talked a lot about phasing, I might look. But my, my goals in this are phased. And I think the first, the first program that we need to work on is the initial assessment of our park program. And that is figuring out what we've got, what do we do well, what do we need to improve on, what do we need to build on? And our youth athletics program is exceptional. I mean, I think we do, I think we do a really good job. I think we have the resources that we have. I came into just basketball so far. But I think we do a really good job offering that program. With that, I do think our facilities within the Red Park itself are in need of some assistance and some updates. And I'm working on putting together that, that kind of needs assessment at this point. My immediate plan is that you'll see implemented over the next couple of months, it's summer. Once the weather's a little bit nicer and we can rely on some warm weather outside is you'll see, you're going to see already. An update to our advertisement program that we're doing with the, throughout the Parks Department. And a big utilization is free resources Facebook. We started about two weeks ago and we had zero followers and now we're up to about a hundred and forty followers. That information is being shared every day. It's being updated every day. Also with the assistance of Carl, we're working on updating and improving our website and the information that's shared on the website. So you're going to see that. We're also going to see the development of clinics. That's the easiest thing we can get started with because we have our youth sports program in place. Mr. Willmore over at the schools has been exceptional as far as to work with and Will D A D. Has been phenomenal as far as getting me in touch with those coaches to begin those youth sports clinics. Because we need to create the foundation and education for our sports and all of our programming and not just focus on being competitive. We need to, we need to create, you know, strong intelligent athletes as well as strong intelligent residents within Grayson County. And I think we can start right here. We're also, we've also ended up implementing a code conduct as far as for our players, parents and coaches to participate in their league. Whether you like to or not, as soon as you put on that, that blue and yellow or that G on your chest, you're representing Grayson County. And we want you to represent yourself well throughout the league and throughout our, our different sporting events that we're, we've already got lined up. Starting with baseball and softball coming up in a couple of months. We're also going to start with our youth programs, implementing some, some very quick and easier things to implement as far as. Day camps of sorts, you know, one, two, maybe three days a week utilizing the park facilities that we already have. So there'll be shelters, playgrounds and the pool itself. We're also looking into alternatives to the big three as far as sports are concerned. Baseball, softball, football and basketball. I think we need to start growing the development of our, our tennis program or cross country program or soccer program. All of those things and we can do those, those are again easier things to implement. And then we're also, I've already had a meeting of principal chiefs at Grayson Islands. We're going to start implementing open gym nights for the use of that space within next, hopefully you'll see that within the next month. And just as a staffing issue is making sure that we can have someone supervise that facility appropriately. And we're also updating our pool information. I think we need to be open more of a Labor Day like most pools are scheduled to be. And we need to be open later than five o'clock. And so implementing those changes in the summary, you'll see, you'll see a lot of those coming on, online. As far as long-term plans. First thing that as, as far as that long-term plan is a master plan for our department. It's very easy to say I want to do these things, but what is going to be my process for getting there? The master plan will help guide the department as well as being assistants to the board of supervisors and, and how we fund and what we fund. So that master plan will develop trail systems that will develop, how we'll program. Will develop the potential development of community centers. And I think the community centers, and what I've seen here, the community centers sound like, and is a absolute necessity, not just for Parks and Recreation Program, but for the community as a whole. And then with that, with the development of those community centers, the additional programs, I'd like to see some additional staff come on board and the development of that staff. So want to try and keep that brief view on it. You have a lot of information coming at you. But if you have any questions and I can answer that, so.
Yeah. I guess.
I know you don't.
Well, first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your vision, your organization. Very well, well said, what you said there. My, my question is, have you had opportunity to possibly see the building that joins the, the Red Park property down there, the old McAllister?
Been around us and I'm not going to lie to you, I've also peeked in the windows. So I have done that. I, I have done that. But as far as are you referencing?
Well, yeah, the potential there for, for something if, if down the road it got worked out.
I think that would be a, and, and I'm not to get into that because I know that is kind of leading to a budgetary discussion. But I think when you're looking at ease of access to our park, connection from downtown Independence with the trail system already going to that location. And then also easier access to our park right off fifty-eight. It's a little bit easier to get to. One of the great things about our park is it's kind of out of the way, but that also is a deterrent as well. And so I think if we had the ability to have a grand entrance into our park and a community center of sorts with a building that size would be a phenomenal addition. To the, to Grayson County. It would be absolutely amazing. That building is about thirty-three thousand square feet. You can do three or four basketball courts, indoor walking, you can have a fitness center, a community meeting space. The, the possibilities are endless if you have a facility. Whenever you're talking about running youth programs or summer camps, and I know that's a need, this child here in a facility. When you're talking about where are you going to put this? You know, it's, it's great to say we'll take them to the pool, but what happens to the thunderstorms? You know, you can't stick them in a shelter in my office, just frankly, it's not big enough for that. But if you had a facility that you could operate those kind of programs out of on a regular basis, that's directly adjacent to a few schools. You can start an immediate active school program, start an immediate summer, full-time summer camp program. And then as well as just, you know, that, that community center that you, that they, that was referenced in, in Baywood, you would have that space right here in Independence. Now that doesn't resolve the issue of, of community centers. I think there's a need for, and I've seen examples of this throughout in, in trains and, and. At, at different conventions that I've been to are pocket community centers as well. I think the best thing that we could do if we were to reinvest in the community is the reutilization of existing facilities. I don't think there's a need to rebuild or brand, build brand new. So Baywood would be a good example of that, of how that is the reutilization of an existing facility. I think you could do that throughout the county as well. Because Grayson County is huge. And when you're looking at a county that is this wide, this spread out. Not everyone is going to want to drop in and it's for that, for that recreation. But I think that's a great place to start. And then if you can prove that that example works and prove to the citizens of Grayson County that my vision, you know, has legs. Then I think that would be a great example to follow throughout Grayson County as a whole.
I appreciate your vision of that. And I, I, I think it's, you're right on the spot there. It may involve, Jacob, because I don't know if that sounds like for a factory or what, a recreation.
Well, it's even the industrial parks.
Yeah, that's correct.
So it just may require her getting in there and talking maybe a little bit. But thank you for that. I appreciate your vision and I'm excited where we're headed.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be here. The residents in the Grayson County have been very gracious, welcoming me and giving me a lot of information and I appreciate it every day. Any other questions for me?
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. I've been trying to make it to the last bit of basketball practice. Dale Mooters for that. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Josh. Next on the agenda, we have a.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. County administration contacted me a few months ago about the possibility of doing feasibility, operational studies, looking for our budget. How we do our staffing standards, our workload, and we welcome that. Anything to make us more efficient, to save taxpayer dollars, we're more than willing to, to do that. I did know that that would be an expensive study if we had an outside consultant to come in and look at that. I found a study by Matrix Consulting out of California that they did for Shenandoah County Sheriff's Office, a very comprehensive study. I think it was about seventy-five pages was their final analysis. But they came in at forty thousand dollars. So I came up and I pitched that to county administration and they said, look at a couple of options. And I agree, that's too extensive. So I found a Virginia-based consulting business called Crown Prevention Center for Training and Services out of Harvey, Virginia, which is down near Roanoke. And he has sent a proposal, not quite as comprehensive as the first study. But he says that he could turn this around in about six weeks and he went for about five thousand dollars. So we can have that before budgets are approved. If that's something that the board and the county administration is still interested in doing, we would be happy to pursue that. I was going to request an additional appropriation because I didn't budget for this study. But we do have an administrative fund that we can tap into that could cover the cost of this if, if that's yours there.
Are there more details that I missed in the packet on what this study would provide? I know we've had conversations over the years about concepts, but is there an actual like outline of what the?
Yeah, I have a copy of that proposal. I could email that to you. Yeah, I want to take a look at it before we make a decision on it.
I, I would, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
So would that be the most, like, action on there or just a consensus? Yeah, I mean, maybe we table it. If, if that's recommendation, maybe we table any action till next month. And that give us time to review what, what you're talking about, maybe have some chats over coffee with the sheriff.
Yeah. And since I've got funds to pay for it, I wouldn't need an additional appropriation.
I'd say even better.
Maybe after you have time to look at it, let county administration know. Because he did say he had a window in, in March that he could do this. Because he's going to come on site, he's going to talk with board members, he'll talk with business owners, with citizens. And it's going to be, and with staff members, it's going to be a comprehensive study.
Maybe, Mr. Sheriff, if it's okay with everybody, since it's not requiring us to do anything other than census. That maybe after we have a chance to look at that, that we could just let Mr. Shefflin know ups and downs on, on that. Then he could tell the sheriff to move ahead. Sounds good. Does that, but would that be the wish of the rest of the? That? That all right with you, Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sheriff. Thank you.
We, I think we'll take about five minute recess since we've run a little bit behind on our agenda. And then we'll start back. About twenty-two. But before we take this recess, I would, I'm very happy to see our young attendees tonight. Taking part in your civic. Government process is a, is a big part of, and a great pleasure, or a great benefit that we have in the United States where we get to enjoy our freedoms. And so this is good to see how government works. Maybe, I don't know if you're here by four or so what. Phase one. I guess, Mr. Chairman, we need... You need approval from the board. Move ahead with phase one as described by our...
If phase one, so you're clear on length. Phase one, you're talking about just the area four and the... You're not including the restroom.
Are we? When I talked to Corl, we were not including the restroom. We were just on the other side. But I think if you do that, it limits you to what you can do with the rest of the building, correct question?
So I think ideally, that's a great question. Ideally would be the right thing to do or the perfect thing to do would be to do the basis to... Well, I'll just be frank with you, based on what I heard. If it's going to cost us roughly a million dollars to do the FQAC and the bathroom, and the bid is 1.4 to do all of that minus not including the gym and the kitchen, am I got that right?
That's correct.
The delta being 400K. I think we're better stewards of the building and developing the capacity to give us the options that we've been talking about to go and just do the 1.4, do what's been proposed. I know we kicked around a lot of different stuff last month, but just listening, going through the numbers over the last month, and then listening to the presentation tonight, it seems that if we've got the resources on the ground, it makes better use of... It seems to make the better, makes the most sense to do the job while you've got the resources there to do the job. Because I think it retains the capacity of that building for whatever use. Even if the, you know, the situation in the county changes and the school system needs to expand, we've got a renovated building to handle that. It gives us options for additional adult and high school education. It gives us the ability to do workforce development, which we've been talking about. And so gives the Boy Scouts a decent place to have their meetings. So that's just kind of where my head is after listening to the presentation and, you know, being involved around the project for the last few years. But anyway, that's kind of what I've been thinking after, on the recess break.
I may hold comments. If somebody would like to form a motion and we'll go ahead and entertain the thought for a second. That way, we can have discussion if, according to Robert's rule, as I'm trying to follow.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with Baywood to take phase one to include the tri-area health and the bathroom.
Okay, we have a motion. Before which do I have a second?
I'll second that. Definitely second that.
Okay. And seconds just fills that the point is up for conversation. All right, so at this point, I feel any discussion?
Yeah, so then... No, I agree with that motion, but I do think it makes sense to commit the resources to do that, what's been planned to be done because of the capacity it retains and provides for both Baywood and for the county, especially on either side. So that's kind of my small recap, restating on what I said a few minutes ago.
Mr. Ab?
I think it's a no-brainer to make a move forward with phase one. We already have a tenant who in six years will pay off the investment that the county's going to set forth here. And I heard that Mr. Sturgill say it's one of those build it, they will come, well, they're already here. So if we get started, it seems to me that using taxpayer dollars to provide this positive service to this part of the county is a no-brainer.
I'll say a few things. You know, we looked at this Baywood thing because the biggest question or the biggest comment I've heard since I've been on board is we need to keep our kids in Grayson County. And took a group of kids to see some of the aerospace technology, the robotics, the drone racing. And the kids in Grayson County were shaking, because they were so excited at what they had no idea. And we went to... We went to Dammel, and that's what they did. They took old schools and made high-tech training centers out of them. Companies came into Dammel, put money in that school and their schools because they trained kids to do what they needed them to do. So businesses put money into it, grant money. We've got all kinds of grant money. People ask, "How can I donate to this?" They're so excited because you're bringing some classroom stuff that they've never seen before. I wish everybody could become plumbers and electricians, but they won't, because we ain't got none of them either. Four million dollars for five million or whatever it comes out to, sounds like a lot of money. We're investing in the kids. We're not investing in... Well, we're keeping the buildings rocking and bouncing, we'd have to pay to destroy it. We're investing in the kids. We're investing in the future of Grayson County and our kids. We've got $20 million in a school that grant that's high full. So if you want to compare apples to apples, there you go. A lot of negative out there about we need to spend money on this and that. We plan to. This don't go, this don't do everything. This is a part of growing Grayson County, and that's what this board is supposed to be doing, is growing Grayson County. And it's not going to be free. It's going to cost, but we're investing in the kids. So that's my statement.
My turn, I guess. Well, I find it interesting that the previous board dedicated two cents of last year's levy to this project, first of all. And then when the school was asking for money, that didn't happen. I think the RLE was given and then 300 plus above that. So traditionally, and being a school board member, I realized for many years it was well above 1 million and above the required local effort. So we're talking about kids. We switched gears real quick from tri-area health to kids. I'm all for anything we can do for kids. I'm for workforce development and those type of things. But if we approve this money tonight, this is a down payment on a potential five-plus million dollar project for the taxpayers. So, you know, and I think it's very fitting that we just had the property assessor in here talking about the economy and the troubled times that we're in. When we have an opportunity potentially as a board to lower that levy, I'm just not on board with this investment at this point. I can see we could fix the bathrooms, put money in the well and get it, you know, up to par for that. But we're going to invest tonight in this project for the potential long-term of 5 million or plus, like they said, to the county investment. And I'm just, you know, trying to be loyal to the taxpayer and try to weigh out what we're doing. I'm not opposed to workforce development and those types of things. I mean, we've got a school system down here that's geared for that. You know, we could... I just think there's better, more reasonable avenues that we can take as a county to spend this money. With two cents of the levy is dedicated to this, and we still got a lot of what-ifs here. A lot of, you know, I mean, you know, stuff thrown at me as I was coming in the door. The... I'm just, I'm amazed that we're so eager to jump on this. So we're going to put this investment in there for tri-area health to come in. And I'm not opposed to them as a whole, but I'm opposed spending tax dollars on this school. And I served on this school board when we closed that school. And we asked this county board for money to help fix it. And we were told that it wasn't worth fixing, we didn't have the, you know, we didn't got that kind of money. Now, we flipped the script and we're educating kids and we're spending the tax dollars how we see. I'm just, I'm very troubled by this, that we're at this point. Because I thought the other night, we had voted to let you go back to the drawing board and do this in phases, to look at the different phases. But what I'm understanding is, I guess the language I was oblivious to is that we approved letting them go ahead and start, and now we're going to... They said, "Yeah, we can do it in phases." So that's, I realize I'm the Lone Ranger here, but I don't think serious consideration has been given to the taxpayers. And I know I'm going to lose this fight tonight, but I hope the taxpayers know where the levy's going and what's been dedicated to them. Because I would hate to think that my checkbook was controlled this way. That's all I have.
You have a comment?
So, you know, my thought was that, you know, with the contract that's come in and the explanation that we received tonight, that I think the bids that we received were to do the whole bottom part minus the gym, right? And the kitchen. And so the amendment to the motion that I've kind of kicked around was whether or not it made sense to include those other parts in that, if that made sense. Because it just... It just seems to me that the concept that's been pitched, the prospect that we have, which is a revenue generator that'll pay back the investment at least on half of it over the next few years, just seems to make a lot of sense. So I guess I'm making amendment to the motion, hopefully I get this language right, that we include phases two and three, which to be specific are the classrooms and the restroom and the common space, I think was the name, does that sound right? So that was what was in the original. So that's my amendment to the motion, that's all.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion to amend the original motion. Is there a second to that?
Sorry.
I have a second. And also, now that opens up for further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Amb. Yes. So we're saying that we're hiding behind this thing that the tri-area health is... They're going to come in and they're going to pay for the facility. If I understood correctly, they're going to pay for a small portion, possibly 400,000 of a potential $5 million investment. So I don't... I'm still trying to wrap, you know, wrap my brain around this.
What they said is that their rent will pay back the 450,000 that it'll cost to do their portion, but they still pay rent after that. So as long as they're in that building and they're on EC, they're generating revenue. So, yeah, it stretches out over time. The "I believe" button, that it's got to be pressed if you're on the side where I'm thinking is... Is that there's potential for other economic development activity? You know, whether it's incubator sites for training schools or the Child Development Center, which is would be a fee service. So there's potential for that. Now, as you and I have talked in the past, both our crystal balls are cracked, right? And so trying to predict that this thing is going to be wildly successful is very hard. And we've seen our own challenges with problem, and they're trying to solve that problem. All right, and so, but I think where I reside on this particular issue is that the capacity that it retains for the school system or anybody else and the opportunities it provides the county from a marketing standpoint and economic recruitment tool, I think is worth the investment. That's kind of where I've come from. And so with the FQAC specifically, they are paying. And it will take six years to pay us back the 500K or 450K that it'll take to do that piece. But that doesn't mean that revenue line stops, and there may be opportunities for... That's not...
Ms. Francis, hold on, hold on, let's talk this minute. Conversations are directed toward the chair, not toward each other. Okay? Is there any other parties?
Well, I got cut off.
No, sir. He had made his point. I had not recognized you yet.
I was in the middle of my discussion when he...
You... The conversations are directed toward the chair, okay? I'm not, I'm trying to be fair about this. You will get your opportunity, but there is other members of this board who have not had opportunity to speak.
I may have been out of line.
The discussion, all right. I have...
I just want you to hold everyone the same...
I am holding you the same standard, sir. Mr. Ida?
I just, one comment. The blight that was left in the county from closing the school, something has to be addressed. Something has to be done. Case point, and my neck of the woods private grid school is probably to the point that we can't do anything with it. And it's still a resource in the county. Past four years that they've been working, that you guys have been working on this, Mr. Chair, I don't want to be the reason we slow up progress, which is the reason that I made the motion. I believe that what's presented to us tonight is a net benefit to the county. And yes, we have to look after the taxpayer to dollar. We also have to look forward to the future of this county. And I guess that's all I have to say. I think this is a great opportunity for Grayson County.
Mr. Amb?
I think your turn. Thank you, Mr. Chair. In light of what was said, I think these schools can come to light. But we just had our meeting Tuesday night, and we had a young man come in here, make a presentation of how we could potentially revitalize all these schools with very little taxpayer dollars. Very little. And that's just being dismissed, disregarded, or whatever. This, you know, I know you're saying 1.4 now. Well, when I came in the building tonight, it was 400,000 that we were looking to approve. Now we're at 1.4. Eventually it's gonna be five million at some point. But yeah, we've got someone with the potential to, to revitalize these, these buildings with, with other grant monies that we, I'm not opposed to private businesses coming in and investing in these, but I haven't heard those dollars, I haven't heard those something. All I've heard is the two cents off the levy that the previous board dedicated to this program. So why can't we give it some time and, and let this guy do his feasibility study? And see if they could potentially not just benefit that school, but all the schools that we have closed down. I, I just don't understand, Mr. Chair, why, why we've got to rush this again. It, it, it just behooves me. And I understand that they're gonna pay their rent, but at the end of that six years when they pay their net and they're also gonna come back to us and ask us for reduction in that way. So it, like again, I, I just thought there's a lot of smoke and mirrors and this is a lot of money for, for smoke and mirrors. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, that closes, the chair will call for a vote. We have a motion with a remit. We have a second.
Can we get a votes on vote, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Mr. Anderson? No.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Bill?
Yes.
Mr. Ida?
Yes.
Chair also.
Vote on the actual motion that would be the whole thing, right? Cause we think I just voted to.
I want to do that. Okay, chair will put it for vote. Roll call vote, Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Frank?
Aye.
Mr. Bill? Mr. Ida?
Aye.
I also, aye. Thank you. Next, redistribution.
Good evening, they're all born electoral board. I'm sure you'll find redistributing just as exciting as that last step. Every ten years we have the census and each locality is then required to reportion their districts based on changes in the population. Our registrar, Miss Revis, included in your packet some information about what those codes are and that you as the board are ultimately responsible for making those final decisions about where district lines are drawn and where precincts shall be. We have come up with some suggestions for you, some different options. And I'm gonna let Stacy kind of present all of those and then we will take your questions and we have some even more with us who also did the maps. Uh, and he is able to do any changing of lines that he might come up with. So he is with us also and, uh, all of these are strictly suggestions and you as the board are ultimately responsible for maybe the final decision of that. I will turn it over to Stacy, Revis, our registrar, she will give you all the digits.
I'm sorry, good evening, everyone.
Hey there.
I'm not gonna try to be very corny. Uh, we did send, like Sarah said, some information to you all. Couple pages just of the code sections, the, the idea of how we just do things, what we're trying to do, what we have to do. And I'm assuming everybody's looked at that and with the change in the Senate districts and the House districts, everybody, you know, I'm assuming those who the new representatives are, what are the numbers are, that kind of thing, is any, any of that not?
I think it'd be good for the public. Sorry, Mr. Chair, she stated who those representatives are.
That's fine, okay, that's, okay. Um, we are still in the ninth congressional, that did not change. Um, our representative there is Morgan Riffith. With the redraw of those congressional lines, he does at this point live outside of the ninth district. He's in Salem City, but he is still our representative and residency is not required for that position. So he's not a resident of our district, but he is our representative. Senate, we were in the fortieth senate district, we're now in the seventh and our new rep for that is Bill Stanley or William Stanley Jr. And he lives over Rocky Down in Franklin County. And our house delegates, now we were in the fifth district with Israel Quinn and now we are in the forty-six council delegates and our rep for that is Jeffrey Campbell and he lives in Marion over Smith County. So congressional stay the same, uh, senate and house, both of those changed. I'm not gonna read through the list on this document because you all know how to read. So unless you have questions on some of that general information.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I understand that, uh, these changes do not take effect though. And unless they have another vote, a special call vote this November, they won't take the change, uh, effect until the end of two years.
But the senate and house, my understanding that the change is effective, but the Supreme Court rule.
Okay.
And that was in December.
I'm just telling you what I heard in Richmond, just last week, from the district, from the people themselves.
If that, if something, and I know that this whole redistricting process was drawn out much longer than it should have been. The COVID pandemic really pushed back gathering census data, so it pushed back our looking at redraw lines. But I'm not, and I'm not saying Mitch is wrong, but the last thing that we were told was.
That's what they told me in Richmond last week.
Well, and I can check, I can clarify and verify.
I may be wrong.
But we are, in the next couple of months, we're gonna be sending it to vote across everybody that I have always been number nine, so. I'll find out. No, you may be exactly right. We may, you know, we may just not have gotten anything from state, I would never say that, that we were the first to know anything, so I will clarify that. Um, but do you all have any questions about anything on that two-page document, anything as far as the do's and don'ts, any of that? Procedures wise?
For the re, for the redistribution process for the county.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, um, what we have looked at, we've all got a couple of maps now. We've got one that shows what our current districts and precincts are, it's color-coded and it has the statistics that came about after the two thousand one eleven redistricting. We have fifteen precincts and we have a central absentee. Um, with the way that we are telling things now, every locality, each department has central absentee process to buy mail ballots. So that one isn't on here. What that does is anybody that mails in a ballot from any district, that's central absentee or cap processes all those mail, mail ballots. So there's no redistricting involved with, with cap or re-presidency. This map with the current info, then the next two that you have is an option one and an option two. And they are very similar, there's only one difference on that. The first thing though, to look at is regarding the actual district line. On the bottom of option one's map, it has on the left initial statistics and that's where we start out before we make any changes at all. And then on the right, for this particular option, shows the statistics with changes that have been proposed. The only line that we redrew was between Wilson and Elk Creek districts because Wilson was under and Elk Creek was over. Wilson keeps creeping over to the east, that one is really getting, you know, spreading out more and more each time redistricting rolls around. So we took a chunk on option one that is really in the center. I'm gonna trip over something, but it's the center portion right here. We took that from the Elk Creek district and moved it over into Wilson. Reason we looked at that is that Mr. Moore and I went, he pulled up the map and we went through and talked about some different scenarios. If we take anything down here without going over to the point that we take one of your board supervisors members out of their district, we don't have the numbers. If we take anything from up here, um, the population up there, that doesn't give us sufficient numbers. If we take any of these sections and combine it with this, we've got too much. So this was really the only chunk that we could take that would put us in line with where we needed to be as far as the district population. Those statistics on your initial, down at the bottom, it gives you a target population that you're shooting for, for each district. So by moving that chunk from Elk Creek into Wilson right here, if you look to the right, that puts us almost perfect with that target population. What we're allowed is a five percent deviation plus or minus from that target. But that moving that chunk right there puts us almost perfect for every district. That's as close as we're, as we can get to that target population. So that's really the only doable change for a district line. Requirements are compactness, continuity has to be clearly defined and clearly observable. And that meets all of those criteria. So as far as a district line option, that's the only one that we have a suggestion for now. Mr. Moore is, he's zoomed in with us here. If you all have a suggestion or you want to see something, then he, we could look at drawing lines, you know, taking a different portion of Elk Creek, moving it into Wilson. Does anybody have any thoughts on that or?
So I don't, not necessarily issue with where you drew the line with the current districts. My, my question though is, I'm the at-large person. And, and the, as I look at the map in its entirety, what you hit on is what I see is that fifty percent of the geography is now potentially gonna be in the Wilson district, right? And so one of the complaints that you hear, especially on the western end, is the lack of representation from the western end. Not that the people that are voted for the Wilson district don't try to do that, but I mean, it's, it's hard, I mean, that's.
That's a huge.
Yeah, it's two hundred and twenty square miles that we're talking about, right? And so was there an option to, are we, we got four districts right now. Was there a fifth consideration of creating a fifth district instead of having an at-large? We create a fifth district, so you go from, you know, thirty-seven, thirty-six hundred. You go down to twenty-nine hundred or something. It's still within that, but you have five districts instead of four, which may give us better representation.
A better breakdown.
Yeah.
As far as that landmass or land area that everybody's kind of responsible.
Right.
Yeah.
So was that?
That's an option and, and again, like Sarah says, this is just our, so if that's something you all want to look at and consider, that's.
I don't know what that would look like and I don't know how hard the numbers would be to kind of make it work. But if we're, if we're the ones that decide what the districts are and we're the ones that decide, you know, we need to, we need an odd number.
Right. Well, and you could, you could have, you know, five districts and one at-large or six districts and then an at-large, you know, however, I think you have to have no less than three and no more than something like eleven for, you know, board of supervisors. Yes, that would be up to you all, but yeah, that's.
Is your, you have, is there a time when this has gotta be, what, what's that?
We're pushing, we were not told by the state what the deadline was. We found out from another registrar and I verified with my liaison that our deadline is March the twenty-first. And that means during all of this, having the county attorney submit a certificate of no obje, no objections in the state attorney Jones office, getting that back, getting all this data plugged into our own registration database and making all this new everything current by March twenty-first.
I think it's worthy of at least looking at from my opinion, but I mean, there's some value in having the at-large person because technically every voter has two, two votes on this board, you know? And so I, I see the value, so I'm not throwing it out. I just wondered if, given the challenges and, and the geographic challenges that we're facing, uh, and it's only gonna get harder if you believe the projections, then it might be time to at least consider it. It may have been another ten years before we do anything about it, but.
But it, well, you've got that option and then another option is a totally at-large locale. So if you like the breakout in the districts and you like that, um, everybody have, you know, having a specific area of representation and then you can look, there are a few, very few counties in Virginia that do at-large, but there are a few. One is like two hundred and thirty thousand population, they do all at-large, board supervisors and school board.
You mean everybody's at-large?
Everybody's at-large, yeah. And then the smallest one is, I think, uh, twenty-two hundred is their population, so.
So.
And that's an, either way, that's an option that's up to you all as far as how you want your board to be set up.
His party, is he at-large, if, like, what he was talking, if, if we went, is, is the at-large, the whole county's at-large.
Right.
So everybody votes for everybody.
Right.
Do they then take the top vote getters like they do in the?
You would still have staggered terms, but if say this next election, there's three seats, three terms that are ending, then whoever runs and the top three people get those seats. It wouldn't be that you would just be running for this particular area or that particular area, you'd run to the county as a whole.
And is there time, and if we're gonna maybe kick this around a little bit longer, which I'm sensing, is there time to get, look at that as well or do we need to give you something so you can meet your deadline?
If you want to, I would, I don't want to tell you not to look at it, but if you do that, then we would probably want to look at having a call meeting as soon as possible, not wait till the next schedule. Because if we wait till the next schedule, there's no way that we possibly meet that one.
I may be able to help a little bit. Can you hear me?
Oh, was that Steve?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi, um, so under, uh, Grayson County Board of Supervisors, you're organized as a county board, form of government. And under, uh, section fifteen point two dash four oh two, for county board forms of government, you must have one at-large, uh, member and then the rest be elected by districts. To vary from that, you probably would require a referendum and/or action by the general assembly. So the short answer to the question is, um, do we have time to make that change now? Absolutely not.
Alright, so back to the original phase one and phase two. I see here that you've got western, central.
Option one, we're still stuck on phases. Option one.
Sorry, so for adding another, just a whole other district, instead of being four districts, four to five, would that take that same referendum, general assembly?
Um, I'd have to look at that. Um, I know that it would, at a minimum, it would take in ordinance and more time than we've got. Because you've got, in order to adopt the, in order to adopt the redistricting in time, you need to decide on the districts tonight. Like, that's almost too late, so.
That's the county attorney.
Everyone's comfortable with, with option one is, and option two would be what?
Option, okay, now, to get into a little more detail, what we have done is look at every precinct as well, combining some of the polling places. And a part of that two-page document had some reasons in there, I think, three billion or justifications of why we are looking at combining some polling locations. Um, I, I'm assuming everybody looked that over. If you have questions or you need to elaborate on any of those.
Did you not elaborate on my?
Yeah, let me flip another page here. Alright, so our first thing, um, under the justification on page, uh, page two, I think, we've got legal obligations. You all know how that works, you all have legal obligations as well. We have to make sure that polling locations and the officers are meeting all of those legal obligations we have reporting to do and just criteria that we have to meet. Um, and we are, we need to think about the practicality and the reality of, of where we're at and what we have to utilize as well. Um, we have some of our officers in polling places now that cannot call us, cannot get in contact with us unless they walk outside, walk around the building, find a phone signal and then it's sketchy. So they can't call us unless they can get outside and we cannot, if they're inside running the polls where they're supposed to be, we can't get in touch with them. So that really could bring about, you know, safety concerns, if there were to be, God forbid, a building collapse or, you know, something that happened and people could get outside to let us know what's going on, there's no way, you know, to get emergency services there as quickly as we should. Um, and just general questions, if there's a reason, like, if, if there's a, it's November and there's a hailstorm, we don't want to have to ask an officer to walk outside with, you know, an inch hail ball to try to, to get a phone signal to call us. Um, and some of them, they don't have landlines. So we're looking at, um, combining some of those polling places where we have a difficult line of communication, don't have that to depend on, um, with some others that we do have that are connected.
And what would those changes look like?
That is, if you'll look at the map that you have that has the current information, the four different colors, it's the yellow, the pink, the blue. That's where our precinct breakdown is at. And it has those precinct names in there, Mount Rogers, Logan Trail, that's what we've got now. So if you look at option one, option one, Brandon's picture looks better up here, or Carl, maybe you have this. Option one is combining some of these in here. We believe that Mount Rogers where it is, because they're on the top of the mountain, you know, just some. We believe that Mount Rogers where it is, because they're on the top of the mountain, you're already so legal one, okay? The western district here would utilize Grant Precinct, and we have looked at doing a painting grant on that Grant Ranch Hall to Grayson Highland School, and one of our board members, I haven't even talked to him, Mr. Willmore, super team, Willmore, about doing that, and he had no problem with us moving these precincts into that, to the school there for voting. So we're combining several into this area, and then Riddle Creek is already a precinct, it's already a polling place, but we're spreading it out a little bit, we're taking half of Mount Wilson to the left, and this new chunk that we took out of Elk Creek. And we're making that, so for this western district, instead of having eight precincts and polling places, we would become that to three. This one is kind of in the center of all this, this one is kind of in the center of the Mount Rogers, again, because of where it's at. We're getting a lot of folks having trouble up and down that mountain, that gets a little precarious. Um, this middle section here, Independence and Elk Creek, when you get further this way, you've got that bulk population, so we left Independence and we left Elk Creek, the way they are. Providence had trees broken up, and actually, we couldn't leave that one that way, but there was a land mass that separated the two parts of trees, and we can't have a land mass separating for polling place or precinct. And then Old Town, um, that church that we utilized, Old Town, that's right on the end of Daylight Stair. That's getting a lot of new voters, and we use Bible Baptist Church, and they have a very small parking lot. So this option right here, we plug in this one precinct, Father's Precinct, they voted that old Father's School, and they have a good sized area where they vote in, and then a good sized parking lot as well. And it's on a decent road, easy to get to. So we combined that into one, and then we left Baywood and Berry, because we, the population there is just going to shoot that. So our registered vote now, you know, is changing this way. So we took, with this, with this, um, option one, we're going from fifteen down to, I think it's eight. Yeah. And it's not to make things, you know, what if the voters will try to contemplate on, like I said, keeping facilities that are better for the phone signal, uh, better as far as accessibility for the parking, um, we kind of have challenges because of just the facilities, the larger buildings that we have available. We have a lot of mountains and a lot of scenery and city areas, so there aren't these, you know, big conference halls and things like that for us to work with. So that makes it a little bit challenging, but what we have left here is something that everybody can get to easily. If we have less polling places, if we do combine, we also have a hard time sometimes getting officers selection, and it's not just Grayson County that struggles with that, just about every locality in Virginia except the far north, you know, you have a hard time getting our officers. A lot of our folks are older, they're retirement age, and at, at points, we feel like we're working them to death because we're asking them, just begging sometimes to work every single election, they're not getting any break. If we can compare down to facilities, the precincts and polling places that we're using, we can kind of retain some of those folks, we hope, let them alternate some elections, maybe they were June and don't have to work November. Or for some of our older folks, if we've gotten enough people, extra people, we might even be able to look at doing some split shifts. Maybe they can't do a fifteen-hour day, but they could do an eight-hour day, you know, and it not, um, have a health impact, you know? Um, so we are, we are looking at doing things for officer election retention. We need qualified individuals, they've got to have certain, certain skill sets. Um, there's a lot more tech, uh, technology now involved than there used to be, a lot more reporting, a lot more paperwork, a lot more everything than we used to have. And it burns out a lot of these folks that we're having, and it's only a couple times a year, but when you don't do it for six months, and then you come back and you do it again, and there's all these changes, and we're just, we're trying to, uh, get it to where we can keep our qualified folks and not have them retiring all this long, just recently.
Who's the chair of this question?
Go ahead.
And I think it's fair, because I'm, I'm the one greatly affected by this.
Uh huh.
Or my district, rather. You, you give us two options, one and two, and what I sense, the only change is in option one versus option two is is Providence versus Freeze is where the Old Town folks are going to vote. Also, it says on here, western, central, southeastern, northeastern. And I don't know if Mr. Durbin's still with us, is that, is he with us? Because maybe he could answer this question better. Um, is part, part of your suggestion to we change those names?
Yes.
I think that's an excellent idea.
I had thought that part.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's fine, that's fine, because it is on the paperwork. Um, we have some of our voters, and I myself, get confused sometimes when you're talking about Old Town precinct versus Old Town district, or Providence precinct versus Providence district, or the fact that your Elk Creek district includes Independence as well. Um, so we were looking at renaming your districts. Instead of Wilson, it would be the Western District. Instead of Elk Creek, it would be the Central District, and then instead of Providence, Northeastern, and instead of Old Town, Southeastern. So it's more a geographic reference to where that district is as opposed to a specific, uh, facility or, um, community or something of that nature. So that's a suggestion, again.
Well, my, my question was, is that, is there a legality involved in that, like he, uh, Mr. Durbin?
As far, where, is he still on?
I think this is an excellent idea, I'm just not sure if we're gonna get shut down.
That's something you can do. Um, the way it would work, you're, you're going to have to adopt a redistricting ordinance anyway. You can certainly include the precinct names and changes, things of that nature, in your ordinance, once it's advertised and, and, and held in public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So that, yeah.
Thank you, I, I think it's an excellent idea.
I just want to jump in for a minute. Part of the reason that we're considering or presenting this to all of you at this point is to try to save the taxpayers some money, because the line has to be drawn regardless. And we're going to have to notify all the voters, and there's expense involved with that. If we anticipate, um, further population loss in the western end of the county, which is what we were faced with, then we're spending more on each election for that end of the county, per person, than we are anywhere else. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to be entrusted by taxpayer dollars to have these precincts open where you get ten voters for an entire day. We now have forty-five days of early voting. Um, if we can adopt all of these changes at one time, we're going to save a lot of trouble, um, or trying to communicate to the voters how these changes are coming. If we do it all at one time, it'll be much easier to let them know. It'll always be upset, they're not gonna like, nobody likes change, they're not gonna like losing their polling place. We don't want to lose a polling place, you know, it's one of those community events that brings people together, um, even when it's only a couple times a year. But it's not sufficiently responsible of us to continue to operate this many polling places, and we're continuing to lose population. So that's why we are making the suggestion to do all of this now at this time. And I did want to point out that the last time this was done, administration, um, Mr. Sweet took care of all of it. He, we, I, our office didn't really participate, but, you know, we participated and, you know, gave some suggestions. But, um, he took care of the big, he took care of the big picture, so we were kind of thrust into, and we felt like getting something for you all to look at, but again, none of this is really our, um, not in our purview.
Well, thank you for all the time you put into it and considering the taxpayer, I appreciate that.
I just have one issue with, uh, the polling places, let me think, something. And same issue as you have with, uh, getting, uh, people to work the polls, and they're kind of aging. Um, I have a lot of people that, in part of my district, that are in a little wraparound of the city, and I'm into Old Town. And, um, they're, you know, traveling to Providence, and, you know, the convenience, I just wonder, you know, if, what kind of impact that's going to have on, uh, further participation.
Well, I did look at some travel times, and we get from this lowest point right here, which is around Cardinal Road, it's a seventeen-minute drive to get to the Providence polling location. So it's not, and it took them probably eight minutes to get to where they were at. So time-wise and mileage-wise, it's a good road from point A to point B, and it's not a cons- a, a significant increase in the amount of time for them to get to the polling place. Uh, we, we looked at that when we were coming up with the, these suggestions again, um, and we also, um, trying to consider the other options that voters have, like, uh, Sarah mentioned. We've got the early voting now, they can come into the office here and vote, and they can be by mail voting now as well. So they have more options for how they vote. It's not, you go one day and that's the only option that you have anymore. So we try to kind of take that into consideration as well, not to make it harder on the deal, but again, looking at fiscal impact that we're having. Our elections are getting more and more expensive, I know she mentioned, uh, some football amounts, um, in June. The, what, June eighth, twenty-twenty-one primary, we spent just for election day, for the people to come out on election day, not counting any of the mail-in ballots, not counting cap, any of that. It was fifteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars for those folks. And one hundred and ninety-five voters out of ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one that were registered came out on election day and voted. So that ended up costing us an average of eighty dollars per voter. The highest, which is the Wilson District Precinct, it was over in Flatridge, it was a hundred and ninety-five dollars per person for those voters to come out. And Independence was, uh, just over fifteen fifty for those folks to come out. In November, looking at that same, just to actually base stance, we spent about forty-five hundred dollars more for four thousand nine hundred and sixty-five voters to come out on election day. That ended up costing us an average of four dollars and fifteen cents a vote. So having, especially for the June primaries, because everybody, the primaries just are not the high turnout elections, uh, and November election, you can pretty much justify expense all day long because you have high turnouts. For June elections, you are kind of pouring money out. And that, we felt like was a drain on, just a drain on your locality.
And back to your point about turnout, our turnout was actually, last time, it increased pretty dramatically.
Yeah.
Increased?
Yeah, this last November was a lot higher than anybody, every locality in Virginia.
So that drop time to Providence, or is, is the shortest between the two options?
Yeah.
Is, do you have folks in other parts of the county that have a longer drop time, say, on the western end?
Uh, over here, because like we said, Mount Rogers stand where it is on the western section. You're looking at any, the total drive time to get, for these folks in here to get to the Grant, to Grayson Highlands. Uh, longest one I've got from this section right here is nineteen minutes. And then the one that we do have that's longer would be folks coming from Comer's Rock. They were at, um, one of the furthest points coming into the polling place was ten minutes, they're gonna be at about thirty minutes, so they're gonna add like twenty minutes to their drive.
Go ahead. The, uh, wh- where's the location for Riddle Creek?
For Riddle Creek, it is Grace Freewheel Baptist Church, it's on Wilson Highway. It's right on, not too far, yeah, it's just right off the main road.
Okay, I, I have one question. Um, the, probably the, the issue of connectivity, you know, and getting results back, you know, after the polls close, probably, right now, as I understand, Providence is probably the least connected of the three, uh, with getting, uh, results back, because they're outside the, the, in Old Town, I mean, I know, you know, service is good, and serves some freeze from the tower that's there. But, uh, you know, if, if that's a point we're looking at, uh, probably from Providence School, we're talking about the least connected.
I don't actually, do we have?
No, um, so we, um, election night, we depend on people calling in the results, and usually it's Flatridge and Comer's Rock that they have the most trouble with, they don't have.
You might be, I'm not saying that's not right, but I, we don't generally have the issue.
But we all usually have, uh, um, when we were talking about this, discussing this, um, logistically, you know, it comes back to logistics and the spaces that we have to accommodate all of these people. When you get up to, you know, fifteen hundred to two thousand voters in a place, you, you know, we have these school buildings. And that's kind of our large
The buildings and the parking lots.
Buildings and the parking lot, because they have to be accessible and that's the part you want, so we were trying to look at, um, those polling facilities that have parking space and are, um, more main thoroughfares.
Anyone else?
Well, along the lines of what you just said, is there any consideration of moving the, the Elk Creek polling place, because it's right on fifty-eight? Campaigning is a nightmare there, because you gotta be seventy feet from the door. Parking is not the greatest there, uh, is there any considerations given to moving that?
Do you have a, if you have a suggestion?
Yeah.
You all are more than welcome to come over some new, with a new place.
There's, we Parking, and if they have an emergency, it, it's, it's a little bit smaller.
Okay.
And logistic voting, walk-in entrances, and you'll have, um, officer of election vehicles that will be there as well. You'll have campaigners that are there, and that's pretty much, there'll be no parking for the actual voter to come in. And if, God forbid, they had an emergency on election day, it could, we could delay their getting help.
They don't have that same issue with the rescue squad?
We have, we have a lot more room with the rescue squad.
So we're not in the way there.
Oh, no.
Where was it prior to the rescue squad, do you know?
The school.
Elementary school.
Okay.
That was before my time, sorry.
It might be, maybe. Thank you.
Yeah, but now, you know, like Sarah said, any other options, this is, this is our best suggestion based on, you know, just what we've been able to plug in, but you all are more than welcome to plug in anything else that and I apologize for the time crunch, we didn't know about the time crunch either, so when we found out, we tried to pull everything together as quickly as we could, so.
So was this supposed to have been done last year, initially?
According to code, yes, but everything, all these timelines got pushed back, but this March twenty-one timeline, they left.
Okay.
So that one didn't get pushed back.
I think ten years ago, we had this done in May of, um, the, of two thousand and eleven, uh, because we had the data in time, and it's, the, the delay has really just been pushed back, because we haven't had the, the data from the Census Bureau, um, to push down, it's caused a cascading effect, but, uh, normally, this is done in the spring of the, um, the year following the census, so a year ending in one.
Yes, Steve, this, this is Brandon Moore, you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I hear you.
I think one other note to make on that delay was, we, we, we got the data from the Census Bureau in August, but we didn't get the data from the state of Virginia, who had to readjust all the population for, um, accounted for the prisons. So they took the prison population back out, where in two thousand and eleven, we had it, and they, we had to wait, um, till almost the end of September before we even got that data. Then we had to wait, um, was kind of held hostage by the state redistricting, because depending on where they put some of their House delegates or Senate districts, it would really affect our options, so, yeah, they, they really, um, had a lot of things going against us to get this done.
There's a cascading effect, but the Census Bureau stuff seems like the major thing, but totally agree.
All right, Chair of the entertaining motion?
This is Chair, I make a motion, we accept option one with, uh, the, including the name change, uh, from the old names to the new names. Doesn't sound like a very official motion, but you know, it's like All right, so they'll have a second. Second, we have a motion, we have a second, open for discussion.
Okay, this, this goes into effect as soon as they prove it through the legislature, is that
Technically, we asked that question to the council, technically, as soon as you approve it, it's in fact, but we still have to send, from what I've been told, we have to send that request, uh, Mr. Durbin would send that, uh, request for a certificate of no objection to the state attorney general's office, and we get that back, then everything's clear at that point.
Will your office be notified to citizens, or will that be the administrator's office?
We'll, we'll be sending every voter in Grayson County, and then they'll notice, and they'll have all that information on it. We send it to the house, the precinct, the
Everyone intended to do a public meeting.
Yes, yes.
And, and Mr. Chair, I think
Uh, Mr. Durbin, I think, no, you're right, okay. Mr. Durbin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I could just give a little sort of granular, um, uh, view on the process. What you're doing tonight is you're, you're approving which map you want to go with. Then I'll be asking you to a- adopt another motion tonight to advertise for a public hearing for an ordinance, um, and to direct the county attorney to prepare a Um and to direct the county attorney to prepare a um. Request to the Attorney General's Office for a certification of no objection. Once we have that, I'll I'll prepare the ordinance for advertisement. I can assist with the advertisement if you'd like. Um you'll put a public hearing on your agenda, uh either at the next. Uh regular scheduled, regularly scheduled board meeting or at another uh meeting, depending on how that works on your, the board's calendar. Um you'll then hold a public hearing and adopt the ordinance. Um while that's going on, the Attorney General's Office will be reviewing our submittal. Which will require a copy of the proposed ordinance, uh demographic background data. A discussion of how this might or might not affect any racial or language minorities. And um basically make sure that this is gonna be uh. Non entirely non discriminatory, which it is. Um I I'm entirely confident that that will get pre, will get not preclearance, it's not called preclearance anymore. But it's called the certification of no objection from the Attorney General's Office. So I I think we'll be able to navigate this process, but that's, those are the steps that it will take. And and so right now, you you're deciding on what boundaries you want to advertise for. And then we'll move forward with the next steps.
So this, the motion, we could. Uh since I don't have a. Uh would would we need an amendment to say pursuant to public hearing?
You could, you could do an amendment of the motion. Um or you could vote to just a approve the the maps that you're gonna proceed with. And then have a follow-up motion to advertise for public hearing and request the county attorney to submit the. Um approval package to the Attorney General's Office.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we have a motion and with a second. And let's meet in a discussion, so call for a vote. We're all favor, signify by the same eye. Sure, Mr. Anderson. Uh, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Frank? Mr. Brad? Also, uh. Five of them. Next, uh we would need to address. Okay, uh motion concerning the uh. Public hearing or?
Yes, you'll you'll um, I would be looking for the board to um adopt a. Motion to set a public hearing on the proposed redistricting ordinance in accordance with the map you just selected. And to direct the county attorney to submit the um approval package to the Attorney General.
Mr. Chairman, the motion that we make is as stated by the county attorney.
Okay, I have a second. Second, all in favor?
No.
Okay. I'm in favor, signify by the same eye. I'll oppose. Five of them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Steve.
I think that's all I had. I'll I'll log off if that's everything.
Uh, um, Mr. Shep?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to uh thank Stacy and Sarah and Steve and Brandon for your hard work on this. You guys did it in a really professional and precise way, we appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is surplus, and this is in a form of a letter presented by.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh this is from uh Sheriff Richard Vaughn. Uh request for surplus on a K nine pursuant with VA code. Uh two point two dash one one two four. Sheriff's Office request that our K nine Rebel be surplus. Rebel is five years old and due to changes in state law, we cannot use him any longer. It is my request that Rebel be donated to Allegheny County Sheriff's Office. Rebel has served this county well and will be missed by our department. With the board's approval, the donation will take place accordingly. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Okay, I have a motion. Any discussion? No discussion? Chair will vote, all in favor, signify by the same eye, uh any opposed? All right, five of them. Four points.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um. Board of Equalization, uh Reese Sage was unable to serve, do we need? Yeah, we should base it.
No. No, they have a ton of it, we got. Mr. Molt waiting on this last one to do the brain in it.
I uh did speak to a gentleman, Casey Johnson, I think his name was. I think your desire was to have somebody western in, maybe some forestry experience and stuff like that, so. He's, I think, considering it, I think he's waiting to send the application in, so I think we'll have a fifth person. Uh here.
Somebody called Mr. Johnson today, did not mention, that doesn't mean he's not still in it, but I think he needs to turn it on.
And I have to see anything back.
Yeah, I already know about tomorrow, please shoot me a note, then I'll shoot him a note, yeah, but he seemed to be willing to do the job, he didn't know anything about it, really, but. I think he's qualified.
He has an address for.
Rugby grocery store. The house just behind, I don't know.
I couldn't sign him as a landowner.
Okay, uh.
Supposed to be one of the qualifications. And I'm not saying he could be some kind of a. Middle name, first name, whatever.
You know, he's starburst at uh.
The name, but I don't.
All right, I'll get, I'll work it, Blair.
Okay, so uh be the board's pleasure to table that for next week, okay? All right, next, CSA family management uh policy team. Looking for an alternate for myself or Mr. Shepherd, for the CPT board, between us and. And Takers?
Yeah, Chair, I would be.
Well, you just fit alternate, yeah.
Because you guys, yeah.
We'll just, okay, so we'll we'll go through all these, we'll get to the end, then we'll, okay, so. Uh emergency service commission. Mr. Tom Ramsey. With the board representatives and there's no one on the board, so we need to remember to get a point.
This is the, the meeting that our teams never, okay, yes. Is it, pleasure the board, I would like to serve on that condition. Is it term of one year, is that, is that what it? It doesn't say here, but.
I love it, is there?
Can I do that for one year?
Anybody else have any other recommendations? Okay. Galax Grace named him a service, uh Vanessa was no longer eligible to serve, any board members?
Does it, I mean, from this. I just wanted, I was thinking that with being on service commission, those kind of two might go together from a, from a knowledge standpoint. To, because there is issues always between what we're trying to do on the volunteer side with what's going on with the support.
Okay, what was the term of that one?
That one's a four-year term.
I see, and how often do they meet?
Every month. The fourth. Uh, but you don't want to do it for whatever reason, uh.
I'm not wanting to get into. And and if I can, over to Brandon, nobody else wants.
Okay, we're new. We have, I will, if nobody else wants it.
If that goes in compared to emergency services, I think the education won't.
I've got one coming up that I'm volunteering for.
I'll I'll do the ambulance service. Okay, all right. Next, I should possibly screen here. Next is uh Mount Rogers Police Service Board, uh Mr. Rebels resigned from this board. And we want to be feel the remainder of the Mr. Rebels term. And I think uh have a recommendation?
Yeah, I recommend Tina that that we discussed, I think he's probably a lot more familiar with this recommendation one, do you mind sharing a little bit?
Uh Tina Bishop is the CSA coordinator for of Grayson uh DSS. She's also served a prior uh. Uh position, uh and served on this board and is familiar with it. So I, she is not a resident of Canada, but she is an employee that has has knowledge of working to this.
And and Mr. Chair, if I may, on that issue with the residency number, that quite is a statement, there's some quotes, but. Um this is kind of an administrative appointment, it's typically, it's a board supervisor's member. And we will still have our citizen appointment on that board representing the county resident.
Have some other recommendations? Ready? Okay, uh we'll just do these on one final sweep. Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Understanding there was a vacancy on the B dot board.
From staff answer to that.
I I thought, I thought I was on that board.
Yeah.
From the last meeting, it was if if the alternate couldn't ascend the position, I would agree to assume that would be the alternate if she could. And she had a conflict with uh scheduling.
Is that Amber?
Yes.
Okay, yes, Amber did not want to do, she could not do the primary. And at the last meeting, uh if she could not. I think it was put before that if Amber or Miss Stewart could not be the primary rep. That you volunteered to do the. To be the primary and let her continue as an alternate.
And I think that's how we left it last, last meeting.
You, you still decide to do that?
I would, yes.
Okay.
But if you want the emergency services or the uh, can I say the service, if you want to?
I'll, I'll do that if.
Well, I mean, but it, he can have, absolutely. Okay, so what would that, uh, we got them down?
So that would be, we're gonna hold off on the board of equalization until Ms. Supervisor Fant hears from his contact. CSA supervisor Anderson volunteered for that one.
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Alternate, yes, I'm sorry, alternate, uh Emergency Services Commission, um. Supervisor Abby volunteered for that one.
No.
No, okay, sorry, I got, yeah, I'm with the program, barely. Um Supervisor Anderson volunteered for that one for one year, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then the Galax Grayson Ambulance Services is for a four-year term. Uh Brenda's unable to serve and uh Supervisor Fant volunteered for that, but now it's called the Supervisor Brand.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
So everyone's clear on?
Did I miss the Mount Rogers one?
And then I didn't get down to that one. The Mount Rogers is uh Miss Hainavish.
Okay, so I have a motion approved by Mr. Belt, and I have a second. All right, voter in favor, all in favor, signify by the same eye, uh any opposed? Five of them. I'm just to county administrators report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um thanks to connection that Supervisor Fant paid for me. Uh I spent considerable time on the, on the online with. Helps related to the Century Link problem that they're going on, and we're now included in that group. There's now about ten counties genuine that are part, that have come together, most of them are in central or eastern part of the county. Now included as there. They have the same level of complaints that we have about the customer service from Century Link. They've set up a a system whereby we can submit uh the particular complaints that we've gotten from citizens that are written complaint complaints. Um but we are also scheduled to uh testify online on September twenty-third. Third, we'll get five minutes along with the other nine counties to talk about how what Century Link is done or not done. Here in our county, so thank you for that connection. Um that groups, this is their third meeting, it's the first one we've been in. There were some others that had just joined also, I think there might be some additional counties to join, so we, we need to address this issue. And we're gonna be testifying before the SCC um on February twenty-third. And it's online, it's not in person, I mean, well, in person.
And it's my understanding that this coalition will present before the SCC, February twenty-third?
Yeah, February twenty-third, we can't be viewed as a coalition from the SCC standpoint. But we can't have, we we've decided between us to have the first one that goes, say, the rest of the, we're gonna do it in order. So the rest of the counties are gonna say, the rest of the counties have been meeting for three, three weeks or three times. And have similar complaints, you're gonna hear from them. We can do that, but we can't.
Mr. Chairman, the, yes, the other thing is important is the SCC is receiving. Uh citizen input up through the sixteenth of February, I believe is that date. And so there's a link, uh I shared it on the Facebook page, I think the county's gonna push it out. But the link will take you to where you can input, and I think it's really important, if you've had issues with Century Link. Uh regardless of what it is, then that gets registered with the SCC.
Absolutely, we need to.
Uh it's just, this is really, really important. If we don't tell them, we'll met, we'll definitely never solve the problem.
Right.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Informational Adults, uh. Let's see that we have no registered speakers, sign up to speak. There's nothing beforehand on the board supervisor turn, that's another closed session. Chair of the entertaining motion to adjourn. All in favor, signify by. I'll move up.
I'll move up.
Record.